Call the meeting to order at this point as we have a quorum. And I will tell you now I have a new cellphone which I have not figured out how to mute yet. So if you hear a ring, I'll try to click it as quick as possible. Please don't give me contempt. Anyway, first item on the agenda is the, are the minutes from the last meeting? Y'all have had those for a couple of days. Are there any corrections or changes that need to be made? If not, I'll accept a motion.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I've got a motion from Art Dias to approve the minutes as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second from Kevin Boone. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Alright, and I'm just gonna use that. If we have any dissent, then I'm gonna do a roll call vote. But if we don't have any nays, just for the sake of time, we'll plug it through like that. First item on the agenda is a 1152-11 request, a utility review for Southern Lights. And Carla, you've got the floor.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to present. Uh, hold on. There we go. The utility review, Southern Light LLC, case UR 20.05. Summary, I have a request, a request to Southern Light LLC for an 1152-11 utility review and approval of the proposed underground installation of approximately 1,344 linear feet of fiber optic cable. The project will run along the west side of North Section Street and the north side of Balanza Avenue from AL 1 North Section Street to 101 Balanza Avenue to service the Fairhope Yacht Club. Here we have an area map to the left and a zoning map to the right illustrating the project area. Here we have an image depicting the beginning and the end of the project area. The proposed utility construction falls within the corporate limits of Fairhope and has been reviewed by the planning department as well as Fairhope Utilities. The comments listed below are a few general comments for City of Fairhope right-of-way projects. Any portions of the project affecting public right-of-way maintained by Ballin County or ALDOT shall require permits from the Ballin County Highway Department or ALDOT. Please include traffic control for all phases of work, whether a single lane, closure, or shoulder work. Notify affected homeowners 24 hours prior to beginning project. May also use door hangers with specified date, time, and duration of proposed work. It is required that all city utility crossings be potholed and verified by the city right-of-way inspector before crossing. The site shall comply with all state, federal, and local requirements, including but not limited to the following City of Fairhope ordinances. Just for summary, the wetlands ordinance, number 1370, the red soil and clay ordinance, number 1423, and the erosion and sediment control ordinance, number 1398. State and federal permits shall be on file with the City of Fairhope Building Department prior to the issuance of City of Fairhope permits. Recommendation: Staff recommends approval of UR 20.05 conditional upon the following: The applicant shall follow the general comments related to utility work as stated above. The applicant and the applicant's contractor shall follow the right-of-way installation permitting and work procedures document provided by the building official. And there can be communication between the right-of-way inspector as well.
Alright, thank you, Carla. Are there any questions of staff from commission members? If not, I'll accept a motion.
I'll make a motion we approve it with the staff's recommendations.
I've got a motion to approve with staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
And that, um... Was that Harriet?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay, I've got a second from Harriet. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Alright, the motion passes unanimously. Second item on the agenda is SD 2030. This is a minor subdivision for a ferry road, ferry road estate, two lot minor subdivision.
This is mine as well. Just a second. Oh, yeah, hold on. Oh, I'm trying to flip the screen.
We've seen this one already, Carla, so if you want to just skip to whatever changes have been made since last month.
Okay.
We heard the entire spill last month, and so you can give us the Cliff Notes this time. Lee, Carla, before you...
Yes, sir.
Carla, excuse me, just a second, before you get started. I want to make sure the applicant can hear. I know we've had some trouble, and there was a little technical... Seth Moore, are you with us?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, just want to make sure you're here if we have questions, and you can hear us. Apologize for that, Carla, if you can move forward, please.
Okay, thank you. This application was held over because the lots at the time did not meet the 100-foot minimum lot requirements for the subdivision regulations. The applicant has provided a waiver and requests to have the two lots reduced to 91-foot wide lots. Here you have the actual preliminary plat that the applicant has submitted for their waiver request with the diagonal front property minimum setbacks. They've already, they also requested a sidewalk waiver as previously, but what's new is the Article 5, Section E stating the lots not subject to zoning shall have lot areas of not less than 15,000 square feet and a minimum lot width of 100 feet. The applicant provided a statement saying that there are many lots within the area that are smaller than the required 100-foot subdivision requirements. The applicant referenced 50-foot lots within Kenny Riverfront and Riverview Estates. However, many of the lots that are narrow in the area that are less than 100 feet wide were planted prior to Fairhope subdivision regulations and the Fairhope planning jurisdiction.
And if I may, if I may, I'm Corinne Kirby, or Corinne Snyder, who is the applicant...
If you'll wait just one second, I'm gonna let Carla finish with her presentation, and then I'll, I'll then open it up and let you do your presentation. You and Seth will have a chance to do a presentation on behalf of the applicant. So let me let the staff finish up real quick, and then I'll open the floor to you and/or Seth at that point, and then we'll move on, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Carla, are you...
I'm still here.
Okay, you can go ahead and just finish up, if you will.
Okay, just wrapping up, these are the requirements and the criteria in which they did not meet. There was no hardship presented as the lots can remain the current width or be subdivided to one lot and meet the subdivision requirements. The waiver may have an adverse effect in that surrounding property owners may wish to create additional substandard lots. And this is follow-up activities by staff and the applicant. If it is the pleasure of the planning commission to approve subject case, the applicant is advised the final plat must be recorded, and the judge should probate the office within 60 days of final plat approval by the City of Fairhope Planning Commission, or the final plat approval is null and void, just as a reminder. Recommendations: Again, staff recommends denial of SD 20.30 for the following reason: The lots do not meet the 100-foot minimum lot width as required by the subdivision regulations. And that's all that I have.
Alright, thank you, Carla. Now, it's time for, the applicant can make a presentation at this time, and that can be either you or Seth, or both of y'all. So it's your turn at this point.
Thank you, Lee. One thing I wanted to say about the 100-foot, if you look at the submittals that we sent in, the lot just to the south is 91 feet wide. Again, over 35 lots to the southeast of their Kenny Riverfronts are 50-foot wide lots, and the ones to the north are also 50-foot wide lots. This is what we feel like being able to have the granting of the wave of less than nine feet of lots.
Okay, thank you, Seth. Alright. Yes, ma'am, you wish to make a... Yes, you can go ahead.
Thank you so much, I appreciate it. Yeah, it's, uh, we're looking for that, that sort of waiver and a variance of that because we are over 92.5 actually. And so if it were, you know, to be allowed to be split, we don't believe that that would cause any kind of problem with, with the community or with any of the surrounding areas, especially considering the fact that there are far less waterfront lots that are very, very much smaller than 100 feet. And that's what we would argue, and that's what, you know, my, my, I would like, and I don't think that would be harmful in any way, and, and that's what we would, we would suggest, and that's what we would argue.
Alright, thank you very much. Do we, we had a public hearing at the last meeting, correct?
That's correct, we did, and I would like to state for the record, we did receive the same letter that we received the first month, again, in opposition from a neighbor.
Okay, is anybody else here? We did have a public hearing already, but does anybody have anything else from the public they wish to add at this time? If not, then I will close that portion down, and I'll turn this over to the commissioners at this time.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject for, for one, one additional staff comment?
Yes, sir.
If it is the pleasure of the commission to approve this subdivision, please add a condition of approval that the diagonal front setbacks are not reflected on the plat, that they be reflected, that they be reflected, be reflected as required by the subdivision regulations.
Thanks, Buford.
Who is that, Buford?
Yeah, but they shouldn't be, are you saying, Buford, this is Ken, you're saying they should not be diagonal, they should be, they should be parallel to the right-of-way line?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That's right, you're, you're right.
Any questions or concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I got a question. If they're asking for a variance or waiver, doesn't that need to go before the adjustment?
As far as I see it, yeah.
Should've gone before the adjustment. It feels more to get that, we, we're not allowed to do a variance or waiver.
That's, that would be the zoning codes, the board of adjustments gives variance to the zoning code.
Church bells.
Can you, can you, can you hear me, please?
Yes, sir.
Alright, this is Art. I'll make a motion. First of all, I'd like to say that there's, I don't see a hardship, and regardless of what other lots were planted at the time, that was prior to the time that the city subdivision regulations were placed, or were put in place, and therefore, my concern is the precedent that would be set if we began to make exceptions without hardships. Everybody and their brother them would be wanting an exception, even though there was not a hardship, and therefore, I would recommend if we deny case SD 20.30 ferry road subdivision.
I've got a motion to deny. Do I have a second?
I second it. This is John.
Thank you, John. Any further discussion? Alright, so I'm gonna ask, in this moment, I'm gonna ask all in favor to deny SD 2030, to say aye. So remember, if you vote aye, you're voting to deny the subdivision, just so there's no confusion. All, all in favor to deny?
Sounds like two no's.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. We'll get this ground, find it, fix it.
I can't hear whoever's talking now.
Just deny.
Okay. Alright, all in favor to deny SD 20.30. Art made a motion to deny due to the fact that we do not have the minimum 100-foot width on the road, so all in favor to deny subdivision SD 20.30, say aye.
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 Any opposed to deny SD 20.30, say, say nay. Alright, so the motion to deny SD 2030 passes unanimously. And I think since this is, Ken, I probably feel more comfortable to do a roll call vote since this is a denial.
I would appreciate that, yes.
And Art's motion, for the record, Art's motion was due to the fact that we do not have the 100-foot width, and I'm gonna go through it for a roll call vote since this is a denial. Just, Lee Turner...
Hey, Lee?
Yes?
Lee, also, I know that Art also mentioned that there was, you know, that he didn't see that there was a hardship, so I would include that, not just the, the staff recommendation, but, but his verbiage as well.
Okay, so noted. So noted. Emily says she has that, thank you, Holly. Alright, Lee Turner says deny. Art Dias made the motion, you're denying, right, Art? Art?
He's muted.
Alright, I'll come back. Art, if you could unmute, please. Harry Kohler?
I vote in favor of that motion.
You voted to deny, correct?
Correct.
And John?
I voted to deny.
And Clarice is not in yet. Kevin?
Vote to deny.
And Holly?
Deny.
And obviously, Art made the motion, so I don't think we need clarification there.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir, and your motion was obviously to deny due to the lack of 100-foot width and no hardship.
No hardship, that's right.
With 100-foot width, okay. Next item on the agenda is SD 20.31, request for Joey and Janet Langley for a plat approval of Dewberry Estates' two-lot minor subdivision. And that is Carla Davis again.
Did we hear this one last, did we hear this one last month?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me, no, I didn't change to the next one. Excuse me, that says Samara Wally, excuse me.
Yes. So this is Dewberry Estate subdivision, a two-lot minor. Again, it is a public hearing at the request of Mr. and Mrs. Langley for a two-lot minor division, and it is approximately 3.8 acres located on the north side of Dewberry Lane at 9781 Dewberry Lane. Here is an aerial image of our subject site near Highway 181. This is the plat of the two lots that are proposed. This application was previously heard on July 6 by the planning commission. That application was tabled to allow the applicant to coordinate with the fire inspector with regards to the fire hydrant. Also, there were concerns about the physical condition of the private road. The applicant coordinated with this, the fire inspector, who has since amended his previous recommendation. Again, this subject site is in Fairhope's ETJ, and it was reviewed by the, accordingly to the subdivision regulations. It does not include any building of any infrastructure improvements at this time, and it did not trigger a traffic study. The preliminary plat illustrates a two-lot subdivision. There is an existing dwelling on proposed Lot 1 and an existing 15-by-12 shed on the proposed Lot 2. There are also utility easements located along the perimeter of each lot. The proposed lots do not front a paved publicly maintained road, but rather a 30-foot ingress and egress easement. The applicant has submitted a waiver to request for the frontage on a public street. The applicant has also submitted a waiver for the sidewalk and the fire hydrant. The previous comments from the fire inspector stated that he had concerns about the fire hydrant location, again, the road access and condition, and the hydrant's location across a major roadway, and that he, at that time, voiced his opinion about disapproval of the waiver. But after a more extensive review of the site and several site visits, the inspector has since amended his recommendation and states that the existing hydrant on Highway 181 is sufficient. However, it's been recommended that the private road be improved, and therefore, staff will recommend roadway improvements that will support the weight of a vehicle that is 75,000 pounds gross vehicle weight. These are the requests, again, for sidewalks, for street frontage, and for the fire hydrant. So staff's recommendation, we recommend preliminary plat approval of SD 20.31 subject to the following conditions: Provision of a 26-foot wide access road that supports the weight of a 75,000-pound gross vehicle weight, that supports 75,000 gross vehicle weight. The improvement should be drawn and stamped by a professional engineer and included with any land disturbance permit. As-built drawings stamped by a professional engineer indicating that the improved road meets the 25-six, 25-foot width requirement and the weight requirement shall be submitted with the final plat. The acceptance of the waiver from the fire hydrants, the acceptance from the waiver for the sidewalk, and the acceptance of the waiver to allow a subdivision that does not front a paved publicly maintained road. And that is all that staff has.
So are we gonna quit, are we just gonna go ahead and take out of our subdivision regs that lots need to be facing a public road? I mean, I understand a waiver for sidewalks, because we waive that quite often when something's out in the hinterlands and it doesn't matter, but, I mean, I just assume if we, as Art says, if we give a waiver of this being on a public road, then I think we need to probably go ahead and remove that from our subdivision regs and just say that from now on, lots don't have to be on a public, public road.
You know, Lee, it seems to me, though, that there are, there are certainly circumstances, this is one of them, I mean, I think we talked about it last month, but this is one of those where I, I almost think you gotta let common sense have a play in whether or not you strictly adhere to the subdivision regulations. I don't really have an answer to that, but, I mean, the alternative would be that you had to have a, you had to make that roadway a, coming in off of 181 all the way back to these lots of public road. And I'm not of the opinion that maybe this, there's even enough width there to do that, is there?
I mean, I don't know, I mean, I'm just saying, does every lot have to be subdivided? And I understand the, the quandary here, you know, my question is simply, you know, what you say, if we do it for one, we gotta do it for the other. If we're gonna just start saying, hey, who cares about the fire hydrant, who cares about the public road access, then, then that's fine, let's just quit worrying about them. It saved our time a lot, and we could just have this thing be, you know, staff-approved and have that many more hurdles to jump through, but I just, you know, it doesn't have public road access, I mean, my, my suggestion was that they look and see if this thing, since it's over three acres, could come underneath the village subdivision somehow, you know, where we could make an exception. I just, you know, I hate to be, you know, sound like a bureaucrat...
Well, that's, that's perfectly a point.
But I hate to be a bureaucrat, but I'm just like, if we're gonna waive it, I feel like we ought to at least postpone this thing for 60 days, make a subdivision regulation change that says you don't have to front a public road if you've got two acres, if you've got three acres, if you've got four acres, if it's a family subdivision, or what have you, but just to say, heck, because these are nice people, which I agree, and because they want to get their son a lot, which I understand, you know...
Mr. Chairman.
That, that we're gonna waive, you know, fire hydrant requirement from subdivision regs, and we're gonna waive fronting a paved road. If we're gonna waive that for them, then I'm gonna waive it for every single other person that comes in from here on.
Mr. Chairman, can I interject, please?
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Chairman, what you just said is now within your and this planning commission's review authority. The, the amendments that were made to the subdivision regulations at the last meeting gives this planning commission that very review authority you were just speaking about. This particular case, however, preceded that, so they carried over their waiver requests to what is before you right now. But as far as fronting on a paved publicly maintained road, sidewalks, all of that is now within your review authority without asking for a waiver.
And to add on to that, we, we do not have a traditional fire department and a fire marshal, which a lot of planning commissions can lead on, but we did, our fire inspector and our building official reviewing these cases, so the advice we have there from the hydrant standpoint, and at least the fire access of that publicly maintained road requirements have been met, so we did go through, you know, the, I think it's tough for us, as we discussed last week, to, to figure where and when a hydrant's needed and where there can be an alternative, but we did let the experts kinda weigh in on this one, and they...
Alright, well, that works.
They vetted that process.
Works for y'all, it works for me. Ken, you okay with that?
Hey, Emily? Emily?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Didn't we open a public hearing on this one last time?
Yes, sir, we did.
Okay, so technically, the changes to the regulations that Buford was referring to, that expressly allow you to relax the requirement to front on a public road, because, because the application was deemed submitted at the July meeting, because we opened a public hearing, it is subject to the regulations as they existed then, not, not, not the one, not the revised regulations. I just wanna, if, if it makes a difference on how you vote, I just wanted to point that out to you.
I mean, I don't make, I don't mind making an exception, Ken. My whole concern was making an exception where I have to continue to make it, but if they have made that change to where it's under, you know, the discretion of the P&amp;Z, then if that's legal and you got no problem with that, I've got no problem making an exception on this.
Well, I mean, the, the change allowed the, the commission discretion to not, to relax the requirement that you be on a publicly maintained paved road. I don't have the language right in front of me, but it's unusual circumstances or, or extraordinary circumstances. I mean, that's the commission, that is the commission's call to make, whether this is that unusual or not. I mean, I guess what they have going for them is they own a piece of land that no part of it touches a public road, so for them to front on a public road, they would not own, they'd somehow have to get the city, or the county, or some other public body to, to take, make, to condemn a road in there for this two-lot minor subdivision.
Okay.
Well, and it goes, and it goes hand in hand with the notion of, of sidewalks. Where you gonna put a sidewalk? You can put a sidewalk out the way, I mean, out to 181, but I didn't make, that didn't make any sense.
No, I, I got the logic of it, Art, I just was, I was just quoting my mentor, Art Dias, on what he says in the past meetings. So, so, but with this, with this change, Buford, it looks like he's got us covered, so I'm okay with it. Any other questions for staff or the applicant? If not, all accept a motion.
Mr. Chairman, and just to reiterate real quick here, just to reiterate, this is a preliminary plat recommendation, as Samara indicated, so, so the, the applicant will still have to make the improvements to the road and then come back for final plat approval. So this is not staff just blindly throwing this out in front of the planning commission. We did, you know, contemplate and got some advisement that if we know that that road is improved, then that means the emergency vehicles can have safe access to the new lots.
And one other point, kinda goes with that, Buford, we need a note on the plat, maybe a condition, and the condition of approval, that not only is there this obligation to, to install these improvements before final plat approval, but that there's an obligation to maintain them. I mean, it's a two-lot minor, there's not gonna be a homeowners association, so the obligation to maintain that road to that state into the future needs to be, needs to be part of this deal, and I suppose the logical people to put that obligation on are the, are the lot owners. I, I do recommend we have a note to that effect on the plat.
Yes, sir. And, and Mr. Chairman, I think, I think Mr. Smith, Mr. Hunter Smith is trying to, is trying to chime in, if you could recognize him, please.
Sure. Hunter, what would you like to add, sir?
I was wondering, are we gonna have, is there a chance...
I was wondering, are we gonna have, is there a chance for my clients to speak again on this matter, or is this just so little? I have my clients here in my office, and they would like to speak if that opportunity is available.
Yeah, sure, sure, absolutely. I, um, we had the public hearing, so I didn't open the public hearing, but certainly the applicant's always, um, got that opportunity.
Okay, is now the best time?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I have Mr. and Ms. Langley here.
Hi, I'm Janet Langley, and at the July 6th meeting, our request was tabled so that we could address the fire protection concerns with the fire inspector. We read his, um, recommendations, are in full agreement. He came to our property shortly after the meeting, and upon hearing his report to show good faith, we received this from three laden contractors and also spoke with a landscape company about treating the canopy. The staff recommends widening the road to 26-foot with full professional engineer interaction. This would present a financial and timeframe hardship. The road was built in the early 1990s and maintained by Highway 27 dirt. Many large vehicles have traveled this road easily while building and maintaining the four houses currently using the road. Fire trucks, roofing contractors, moving vans, et cetera, have used that road. There are two power poles north and two power poles south at the road edge that would have to be moved if we widened the road. We have been working with video electric unsuccessfully for two months to move two power poles after utilities were moved underground. Many beautiful trees would need to be removed, and that would change our wooded aesthetic. And we believe the wooded area is a noise buffer to Highway 181. We were told by one of our road contractors that it would cost over $100,000 to accommodate the 26-foot road request, including the tread removal, the, uh, electric, uh, company adding culverts, because we have culverts in the middle, layers of dirt and road material and asphalt, with the professional engineering drawing reports in action. This is not a commercial property, but an individual expense. To satisfy the City of Fairhope Fire Inspector, we intend to asphalt 700 feet as requested, adding large over the size rocks on the side of the road to aid drainage, prevent erosion, and help us maintain the condition of the road. We are not asking for a publicly maintained road. We will raise the canopy trees to 13, 6 and above and routinely maintain that high clearance. We are not giving this lot to our son and his family as a cost savings, but to add to the quality of our life. We benefit from living with generations of family. Over 20 years, we have had three homes on our street with parents and siblings living as neighbors. When our aunt and uncle built their home eight years ago next door, the building permit was issued without a question. We believe the two brothers that own the two lots connecting to the south side could get building permits immediately. This does not make common sense that the adjoining properties would be treated so differently. We request approval at this meeting. We've been planning this for over a year, and in interviews with many Baldwin County builders did not indicate there might be any problem. Only after the chosen builder tried to get the property addressed did we understand the subdivision had to be approved by the city after Baldwin County had approved it. All this happened after COVID-19 entered our world, and we, just like everyone else, were trying to stay healthy. We are currently living with our 91-year-old father, our son, his wife, and their two children. This was supposed to be a temporary situation in anticipation of our son building their home next door. Our plan of living together while the home building happens is working, but we need the home building to begin. We have two grandchildren, he will attend Fairhope schools. Parents are working at home and on location. We are trying to stay healthy, but the extension of this timeline is trying, and we respectfully request approval tonight.
All right, thank you very much.
Mr. Mr. Langley would like to speak too, is that okay?
Certainly.
Yes, I met with, uh, with the fire inspector, and, uh, we went up and down that road, and, uh, he knew the, the width of the road, and, uh, he just, he mentioned to me that because each of his fire trucks have 1,200 feet of hose on each of them, that this would not be a problem as long as we just blacktopped the existing road. And that was his words to me when we met. And so I just, he didn't say anything about widening it to 26 feet. He just said if we blacktopped the road as it is, uh, we would, that would be fine with him, and to keep the canopy up to 13 and a half feet.
I apologize, who, who, who said that report? Was that the fire inspector?
The, the fire inspector, Mr. Gerb.
Thank you. All right. Anything else on behalf of the applicant? If not, I'll go ahead and turn the meeting back to the commissioners. Commissioners?
Yeah, this is, this is John. I ju, there's an audit page in the package that has the fire inspector's, uh, response, and basically what was just said is what it says.
Right.
Where, this, this is Art. Where did, where did the 26 feet come from? What, what prompted that?
26 feet?
Yeah, Art asked, Buford, Art asked what prompted the 26 feet.
Yeah, Samara's trying to answer.
I apologize. Um, the 26 feet, uh, came about after we spoke with, uh, both the fire inspector and the building inspector, Mr. Eric Cortinez.
What, what was the, uh, what was the theory of the, of the 26-foot wide road? Did, did the fire inspector say that he needed 26 feet?
I suspect that is a part of the International Building Code and the Fire Code that the city's adopted. I believe that's where the standard is, um, for, for a fire access road. Buford, does that sound right?
That, that does, uh, Hunter, going by memory. And, and, and Chairman, Commissioners, just to, just to reiterate, um, that we had to get the building official involved on this case, and the reasons for that are above and beyond the scope of this meeting. And the staff recommendation before you reflects the follow-up review by the building official, as Samara mentioned. And just to clarify, this staff recommendation is not recommending paving anything. If the road can, can main, can, if the road can handle a vehicle of the weight mentioned in the staff report, in the staff recommendation, and if that's gravel, if that's riprap, if that's gabion stone, whatever it is, that's what it is. It does not necessarily have to be asphalt paving.
All right, Commissioners?
Um, uh, let me, what's the length of the road? 700 feet?
Approximately about 700 feet, yes. To the top, to the top of the hill, the rest of the road is flat and very workable.
Okay, so it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be paved, is that right?
No, it just has to be able to support the vehicle.
That's, that's correct.
Well, I understand, but the pro, the point is, is that, and I'm, I'm speaking from firsthand experience now, because I'm, I'm doing a road that's, uh, right now is about 2,000 feet long, and, uh, it's a heck of a lot less expensive than, uh, $100,000, and it's just a matter of, it's, it's crushed concrete. Uh, it is available locally, and it's about $400 a load, and a load goes 150 feet. So if you've got five loads, we got a couple thousand dollars. Anyway, that's, uh, for general purposes or for discussion, it's, it doesn't have to be a, a massive roadway. And you can't drive, when it rains on it, you can't drive a 10 penny nail in it with a sledgehammer.
We need to bring in cost.
Yeah. Could you put this back on you? Oh, no. Hello, sir, this is Joey Langley. Can I, can I address that?
Uh, sure, but, um, that's fine. Now, you're opening up Pandora's box, because the cost is not really what our main issue is of, you know, what a cost to comply.
To, to make that road 26 feet wide, we're gonna have to build up the road. That's where a lot of, and the engineer part of that, uh, we already have a culvert there, and it's gonna have to be more than twice what it is now. So we're gonna have to put another culvert and have the engineer come in and test it and get, and take out trees. So that's where the $100,000 came in. It's not just laying rock down so we can, so we can make that flat. It's a, it's built up now.
I'm trying to understand where the 26 feet came from.
We are to it.
That's, that's the, our staff is saying, Art, that that's the, um, International Building Code for Access.
And where you, I think you see a little bit of our, something, we, we're not experts in that code. I am looking at it right now, and I've gotten a couple messages where it may be that 20 feet is appropriate, and where a hydrant's there and needs access, it goes to 26 feet. If that is our only stumbling block, well, maybe we change that condition of approval to meet whatever the fire official says. Um, i- if that's the, the stumbling block, and that we can, we can let him guide us on what the correct width is.
Okay. Is he with us?
He's not.
So we do, we hold it over another month, or do we just make a motion to accept staff recommendation, or make a motion just to do anything? I don't, somebody needs to make a motion for something.
You were referring to make, make the motion basically for.
Where the.
On the, uh, fire marshal's recommendation of the road. If you look at staff recommendations and, and Buford, Samara, this is kind of the case y'all been working on, so if I overstep, correct me, but requires a provision of 26, 26 feet wide access road that supports a certain weight. We could amend that provision of an act, of a fire access road as approved by the building official and leave everything else of drawings and, uh, necessary in place. How does that, that work? Samara, Buford?
I, I'm in, I'm in agreement with that, um, just approval that it meets the Fire Code standards in terms of width and keep the weight of the vehicle. If, Buford, do you have any comment?
Not at all, and, uh, um, I was going to say something else that'll make this complicated, so I won't. I'll keep my mouth shut and, and, and we'll stick with that. Yeah, as otherwise, as otherwise required by the, as otherwise, as otherwise required by the authority having jurisdiction.
Right. I mean, the code does say that the authority has, having jurisdiction can make a determination that's not in the code.
Correct.
Uh, but we, I, I would like to see that in writing.
And this would still come back for final? We have, uh.
As pres, yes. So, so Commissioners, again, this is a preliminary plat, so you would have to see the final plat before it could be recorded. And in that interim, if we can determine that it's only 20 feet, then that's what is reflected on the plat.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this. Kevin, can I interject just a second?
Yes, go ahead, Ken.
Uh, thank you. The, uh, you know, this was tendered to the, by the applicant as a, as a minor for simultaneous preliminary and final plat approval. If we're gonna treat, uh, it, it's, certainly if we were going to inquire, require these improvements, I think the commission could insist that the applicant, uh, agree that it be considered a preliminary plat. You may note on the plat itself, it calls it a final plat. Since this has already been continued, I mean, or it's tabled once, we've basically used up the 30 days, I think we should secure the applicant's consent to a, another tabling. And if they don't consent, then we should just go forward with the vote.
For, for what purpose, Ken?
I, I don't.
Because this was tendered to the commission last month, because we opened a public hearing. So we basically burnt the 30 days, uh, now there's still a day or two left in the 30-day period, that's why we were able to table it. With the automatic approval under the code, would only happen in a couple of days. But to table it again.
No, but why, but no, we understand that, but why are you suggesting that we table it at this point?
Well, I, I was, I wasn't. I surmised that someone was about to make that motion.
No, let's see what, let's see what his, let's see what his motion is first, and then we'll come back. Okay.
Okay. I was gonna make the motion to approve this.
Sorry.
With sta, with the staff recommendations, other than, or the recommendation that you just said concerning the fire authority giving the recommendation for the street.
So, so Kevin makes a motion to accept the staff recommendation with the proviso that if the, uh, building commissioner is okay with, the building official is okay with the ingress egress for fire protection, that, uh, that is adequate. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll put Holly down for the second and further discussion.
Lee?
Yes, sir.
The applicant should still agree that this is a preliminary plat approval or vote, not the final plat.
It says that.
No, I'm talking about, we need the applicant's consent to that.
Okay. Do I have that consent, Mr. Langham?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we've, thank you. We've got the consent from the applicant that this is a preliminary and that the final plat approval will have to come in the future. Um, any other further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Any opposed, say nay. All right, since the motion passed unanimously, I will not call a roll call on that. Next item on the agenda, SD 2023, 2023 public hearing to consider the request of East Park LLC for a preliminary plat approval of Parkstone subdivision at East Park Pud, a 41-unit subdivision. And I have got Mike Jeffries on that one.
Mike, before you get started, I just wanna, uh, let Lee make an announcement. I believe we have Clarice in.
Oh, okay, Clarice, are you here now?
She's muted at the moment, but I believe she's with us.
Okay. Hey, Clarice, if you, uh, are here, if you could go ahead and unmute and just give us that affirmation, please?
Yes.
All right, we got Clarice, now you can put it mute again. All right, perfect, thank you, Clarice, and, uh, welcome. All right, Mike, you are on the table. You're, you're, uh, you're up, sir.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
And do you see the slideshow in front of you?
Uh, yes, we do.
All right. Well, you said this is a preliminary plat approval for SD 20.23, Parkstone subdivision, public hearing to consider the request for a 41-lot division. The property is approximately 12.63 acres and is located on the north side of Parker Road, just east of US Highway 98. Uh, subject property received final approval at the December 23rd, 2019 city council meeting for an amendment to an existing planned unit development. Up on the screen, on the left-hand side, you can see the aerial image of the property just north of Parker Road, and on the right side, or it's gonna be the left side, the zoning image, and on the right side, the aerial view.
It's not changing, we see 20, basically, August 3, 2023.
Is it not changing?
No, it's not.
All right, hang on. About now.
Uh, no.
Actually, Mr. Worship.
Well, you've got something good to look at.
No, I was thinking a little bit differently than that.
There we go.
Let's try it again.
We got it now. Thank you, Mike.
Okay.
We just lost it.
You, you heard some of it, so now we'll go back over what you heard. There, the, on the screen is the image of the zoning map and the aerial overview. This is a copy of the preliminary plat for the subdivision, and we're gonna have a couple different images with this being a planned unit development. It has an approved site plan as well. It's a little grainy on the screen, but in general, the layout for the lots is very similar. The biggest changes with the lots layout and the design of the neighborhood is the difference in the green space. The next slide we'll go to will be the landscape drawing, and we can go back and forth to see what has changed, what some of the differences are. So, looking at this image, it's a little clearer. Uh, some green space that was in the northeast corner has went away and been absorbed into another part of the development. On the eastern portion, which would be the bottom of the screen, there has been a second detention pond added where there was previously green space during the PUD development. None of the hard engineering was accomplished during the site work in preparation for the actual subdivision. The need for a second detention pond has been added. Our subdivision regulations do allow for up to a maximum of 30% credit to be given to detention or, detention or retention ponds or similar holding basins if they meet a certain criteria, which is having a three-to-one side slope and being clearly integrated into the open space area. The, I'm gonna flip back to the approved site plan. There's an existing cell tower that is on the site, and it is separated and will be a separate use throughout its existence. If it was ever to cease, according to the approved planned unit development ordinance, it would revert to extra green space for the development. And on this screen, you can see there's the detention pond marked out in the center. They have added where Lot, a Lot 33 was, kind of in the center area, a parcel of common area that is there as well. Some of the site data that we've already went over is according to the planned unit development. Uh, majority of the lots have a front and rear setback of 20 feet, side setback of seven feet, and a side street of 15 feet. Lot 41 is isolated by itself according to the planned unit development. That is a parcel that is set aside for commercial development and has the same uses as B2 and has its own set of setbacks. So, as I said, it's been reviewed according to Fairup subdivision regulations and had it in a approved site plan that it had to be reviewed against as well. Uh, traffic was a concern and a traffic study was conducted by Kenneth Nichols with Gulf Coast Traffic and Development Services. Uh, he stated in his report that traffic on Parker Road is relatively low in volume, and in his opinion, that no detailed traffic analysis is warranted as a result of the development. Uh, the green space changes, as we just went over. We've had several drawings and several iterations have been submitted and reviewed. Uh, the case has not made it to the planning commission the last couple of months to go over revised green space drawings that came closer to meeting the subdivision regulations. This drawing, uh, the landscape drawing was in your packet. I have blown up one of the changes that have been made since the staff reports were done and sent out. This is in addition of a 12-foot-by-12-foot gazebo in the middle of the central green space, and it's noted out that it's gonna have a gable roof with rough sawn timber post, beams, raptors, and a metal roof. Uh, staff recommended denial of SD 20.23, uh, due to the green space in the initial staff report. Uh, staff felt that the detention ponds and the surrounding green space areas were trying to complement each other and were still lacking. The quantitative number was there. They were hitting the 20% number required by the subdivision regulations. The PUD actually required 21.3, but that was, you know, again, a conceptual idea. Once they got to the engineering and the 20% that they're counting has both of the detention ponds, which I want to point out are dry ponds, retention ponds are wet, but these are dry detention ponds, and they're considering using the maximum 30% allowed for each one to count towards their green space. Uh, with the new drawings that was presented, staff is not against approval if the planning commission finds that the proposed subdivision meets the intent of the green space requirements and other requirements of the subdivision regulations. And staff is happy to answer...
Hey, wait a minute, Mike. I thought your recommendation was to deny it. So, now are you saying that you want us to approve it?
The staff is neutral on this decision.
Well, then why does it say deny? Then why does it say deny? Why doesn't it say neutral?
They turned their further plans after this was written, is what he says.
The initial report that planning commission received was before the new drawings came in at the end of last week. So, the slideshow has been amended contrary to what the, uh, recommendation that you had in the actual packet itself.
And what, I, I, the 30% is a maximum allowable, if we will. Our code reads that shall not exceed that. It does not say the planning commission has to give that. So, what's at question here is what the green space provided. Does it meet the intent?
I didn't think we counted detention ponds, um, dry or wet unless they were an amenity, like with the dock and a fishing pole. I thought that the green space was space that people use, not just like a, you know, a detention pond that, you know, is over here in the corner and it's, you know, that it's not a density issue, it's an amenity issue, is what I always thought. And that's what has been very clear of what we had.
That's why we had the denial, and if you recall, Chairman, the, we've, we've stricken the 30% allowable in the future so that we don't have these debates.
What did we have then?
There, there was, it's up to the planning commission.
The PUD has 21%.
Right.
And it's...
That's what's required.
And the, well, if the PUD requires 21, it requires 21 because it's a specific zoning. So, for the PUD zoning, they took, what, 21.3% is what they suggested, but even in that, we've got the discretion as to whether or not to count it, like a retention pond. In other words, if they build a retention pond and it's got a dock on it where kids can fish, it's considered amenity. If it's a detention pond behind a fence that's got, you know, knee-high, you know, grass growing in it, you know, muley grass or something like that, you know, growing in it, um, then it's not counted because it's not considered green space because it's not usable.
Well, the problem with that is, uh, I gotta, hell, I did this subdivision off of 101, I mean, off of 181 before, just south of, uh, 104. There's probably a two-acre retention pond and it's dry. And when you say if it's gonna be, we don't know if it is or isn't. If the rules say it's 30%.
No, but the point is, is the rule is that if that, that was not, you weren't getting credit for that when you did it. It's green space, or if you did, it was a different rule. Bottom line is if that's a wet pond, you could count it as green space, not whether or not that needs to be there for a water retention facility. It doesn't mask, when you have this kind of density, the question is, do you have green space where the kids have somewhere to play? And they can't climb over a fence and play and, you know, waste deep in luck with cotton mounds.
Is there a fence around this?
No, and what, what the...
See, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying not to assume what may or may not be there. What I'm trying to do is figure out if the rule said 30% at the time this was turned in.
That we can up to.
It can up to.
By our discretion.
I understand that, but the, but the point of it is, it gets a little, it's hard to get a subdivision drawn up if, if nobody knows what the board's gonna do. It needs to be set. That's why I say this is set. In my, in my mind, if it says 30%, it's 30%.
It says up to. It says 21.3%. You need a green space, and it says that we can count up to 30% if it's an amenity.
And interconnected with other green space.
And they're connected with other green space, and we went into this, you know, Holly had a lot of comments about this, and so did Rebecca, stating that somebody throws a little green that they can't get into in some wetlands in the back and a little bit here and a little bit there calling green space, that we're looking for active green space that people can utilize, not, oh, we can't put a lot there because it's a gully and the water retention's back here that's got, you know, waist-high junkus and, and, you know, cotton mounds. And the point is the green space is usable green space that is an amenity, and that we can, we don't have to and we shouldn't, give up to 30% credit for that if it's considered an amenity. And here we've got one where it shows 20%, not 21, and for that 20%, they're requiring that we use 100% of their detention, which is hodgepodge here and there.
I thought it said 30%.
Well, that's why I said, getting every bit of the allowable for each detention pond, they need 30%.
We can utilize up to 30% if the ponds are gonna be used as amenities.
They need the maximum allowable.
Mike?
Yes.
Uh, this is Art. When, when did the second detention pond get added into this?
At the subdivision application.
How long, when was that?
Believe that was in...
March.
When it was submitted.
The zoning, if you recall, shows this as green, the westernmost...
Yes, they...
Detention area as green space completely. It was determined in between zoning and subdivision that they needed additional detention.
Okay. Well, I've got, I will, I will have something to say right now, but I've got a couple of comments. Go ahead, Lee. I'm, I'm...
No, no. Um, I guess we need to go ahead and let's go ahead and hear from the applicant, and then at that point, um, I'll open the public hearing and then close the public hearing, and then hear your comments, Art.
And we have, Matt Sankey is on the line with us, and Tom Granger is present in the chambers as well.
Tom is walking up. Mike, Tom's walking up to the mic, so I'll give him the floor at this point.
It's in the room. You don't have to use that mic. You can hear in the room.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you. Tom Granger with Sawgrass Consulting. Uh, we've been going back and forth with staff, and they've been very helpful to us. The regulations, uh, well, let me go back. I think there's some confusion. On the original PUD amendment, uh, we did anticipate 21% green space. That's before we do any design work, and so during the design of the subdivision and the drainage calculations, indicated, dictated that we had to add a second detention pond. So, that's where, that's where the second, the northernmost pond came from. Uh, we've gotten this down to the one-foot line on the, on the goal, and, uh, we just can't seem to get the, the green space, and it's more of a subjective matter. In, in the regulations, as, as Hunter stated, um, you can count up to 30% if it's integrated in, uh, with the green space. And if you look, we have green space that surrounds the ponds. I don't know if you have that slide or not, and we do have walking trails. We, we've got 875 feet of walking trails through the green space interconnected. We have five, uh, sitting areas, park benches with additional landscaping around those park benches, and we added, uh, as Mike had stated, we eliminated what was Lot 33 that you see at the intersection of the two roads and made that a, a, a green space and added the gazebo. And that got us close again to the green space, uh, in, if we could get, actually, we only need 28.5% of the 30, of the, of the detention pond area to meet our green space requirements. We felt that by adding the walking trails, the benches and the gazebo, that was, that was the amenities that would allow us to count 30%. It gets subjective, and we've, and we've been talking to staff about that of, that, we don't have anything that specifically dictates how to get to that 30%. Uh, is it, is it one gazebo and five park benches? That's what we've got, or is it something in addition? And we're, we're asking for, for approval of this and that, that, uh, you know, I know it doesn't matter. The previous PUD, we've got less density than the previous PUD, about 1,000 linear feet less roadway that had previously been approved. And so, we just felt it was a, a good subdivision. We, we thought we met the 30% uh, rule, uh, by the additional landscaping that we turned in last week, and, uh, staff had informed us that they were gonna remove their recommendation for denial, but basically, basically leave it up to the, this discussion and the planning commission members.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, sir.
Is there anybody else that wants to speak on your behalf? Was there somebody online, Tom, that wanted to speak on behalf?
I believe Matt Sankey, the client, was on the line. I'm not sure if he still is or not.
All right. Matt, are you still there? If you're still there and have anything to add, um, now's your opportunity. All right. Thank you, Tom. Um, I'll go ahead, and this is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Does, uh, anybody wish to speak to this item? This is up near the public shopping center on, uh, the north side of Parker Road. Um, there's currently Greer Gardens at this location now. Anybody wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time and turn the meeting over to the Commissioners.
Okay. Uh, this, this is Art.
And Art, if you can get, if you can talk as loud as you can, Art, um, get as close to the microphone and talk as loud as you can, and my ears would appreciate it.
Man, that's the first time I've ever had anybody tell me that.
Probably the last time also.
Probably the last time, too. Hey, look, uh, there's a couple things that, 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 I guess, give me a little bit of heartburn, or in one of them, a lot of heartburn. One is, this is the planned unit development, the PUD. PUD is supposed to be used for an imaginative and unique type of development. I really, this looks like a regular subdivision to me, and I just wanted to make that point, that it's, uh, it, uh, the, the use of a PUD to get smaller lots and more lots is not supposed to be what the issue is all about. Uh, that's number one. And then, and then the other thing that really gives me some heartburn is the way the greens, quote-unquote, green space is handled in this development. I'm thinking with 41 lots, it's gonna be a lot of kids that are gonna be in this subdivision. And if I look, for example, go over here at, uh, uh, when you come in off the four lane where it says Lawrence Way, and you come on the property, there's a comp, there's, there's two, there's a, there's a pond right there, and then there's, and some green space common area, and then there's two lots, and then another common area right at the intersection. Well, that intersection lot is 100, I think it says 112 by 100 feet. I mean, come on, really? That's about a quarter of an acre, the way I see that. Um, and, and the thought that there is any kind of room for kids or anybody else, and hopefully gazebo doesn't, doesn't actually do anything for the kids except for give them, give them something to tear up. Um, and, and that just doesn't, that just doesn't do it. There's an issue associated with, how do you get to the required green space? Personally, uh, the way I would see it is to make that area right there where those two lots are stuck in between, there's no, there's no continuity of green space between the one at the intersection and the one over by the pond. Uh, now you're looking at something on your, on your drawing. The one with the gazebo on it and the one over here by the pond, there's no continuity. All of them are fractured, and yeah, Tom says there's all these linear feet of, of walking trail, and that's all fine and good. I'm thinking about places for kids to hang out instead of going out in the parking lot over at Publix and, and doing what they're gonna do. So, my theory, my thought was, and I know, Tom, y'all not gonna wanna hear this, but my thought was to include in the co, uh, in the common area, those two lots that are between the green space with the, um, gazebo and the pond over here, and take those two lots out and have a dead gum place your kids can play. Now, that gets you, I think, based on what I remember is, uh, is the calculation for the green space, that gets you to an area, to a point that, um, you're not going to, uh, you're not gonna have a problem getting to the percentage that you need. It's gonna give the kids and anybody else a place that they actually have got some green space to participate in whatever activities they want, and yes, you're gonna lose two lots, but, you know, it's a PUD, and, and your PUD doesn't do anything imaginative in my, in my opinion anyway. So, that's all I got.
Hey, Lee, can I say something?
Absolutely. Go ahead, please, Holly.
Who is this?
Hey, it's Holly McKellar. Hey, everyone.
Hey, everyone. I would just want to reiterate what Art was saying. There's one thing that we're not going to be get anything back from is green space. Once you lose it, you lose it. You can't get it back. So in any successful development, is not doing the minimum of green space, they're doing the maximum of green space. There's not a neighborhood that where people have said, gosh, I sure wish there were more houses. And I know from a developer's perspective, they don't like to hear that, but for the citizens of our community, that's what I'm going to say, is come up with something a little more creative, a little, a little more exciting, just not the minimum.
Thank you, Holly. Anybody else wish to speak to this? If so, now's your chance.
This is John. I, I would like to, you know, the green space too, most of this green space is behind houses. It's, it's not easily accessed. Here's another comment. I'd also like to comment on the traffic study. That, that traffic study doesn't seem to take into account those apartments that are back there. I think there's going to be a great deal more traffic on that road than, than what that preliminary traffic study says.
Well, Mr. Rooks not in this meeting right now. He probably would come out of the chair when somebody said there's no traffic issue on Parker Road. Any, any other comments at this time?
Hello?
Yes.
This is Clarice.
Hi, Clarice.
And I do think we do need to do another traffic study because we had a similar situation like this before. So if there isn't a current one, I do believe we do need a current one because of Parker Road and, and just the amount of traffic that's there anyway and the problems that we're currently having that are there. And I do agree with Art with, this really isn't, there's nothing special about this subdivision.
Thank you, Clarice. Was there a traffic study done on this?
Yes.
And did this say that...
There was a traffic analysis done that said it did not warrant a full-blown traffic study due to the volumes that this subdivision was going to create.
Remember, there's been something on the books approved for a while, so this was amendment to that existing PUD. I do believe the next, any, any future phase where they're behind here will generate a new traffic study. Can everybody hear what Hunter says?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, the good, the, at least, is a positive thing on this is there's, there's a central exit onto the four lane that doesn't go to Parker Road. I mean, that's, that's, whatever traffic's on Parker Road, not necessarily going to take the hit of the, the traffic generated by that subdivision either.
If you were exiting the subdivision and going north, you would be able to exit north through without going out to Parker Road, which, you know, you can make a right turn and that's certainly a positive. Any other comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Yeah, this is Art. I'll make a motion. I would, I would move that, I would move that parks don't subdivision, let's see, what's the case number? Case number SD 20.23, be, be approved subject to staff recommendations, if, well, no, staff was neutral on it, but subject to the moving or the elimination of, it looks like lots 33 and 34, 34 and 35, I can't read it. I think it's 33 and 34. To improve, to increase the common area that will then put this development in conformance with what's required in our subdivision regulations.
I've got a motion to approve subject to, Lee, just one second, Hunter. Subject to lots 33 and 34 being converted to green space. Do I have a second for that motion?
This is John. I second it.
All right, I've got a second under further discussion. I just want to, please, Hunter.
I'm not going to speak for you, Thomas, if I'm wrong. There has been some questions that this could be tabled to review further as opposed to making that.
Wait, y'all got to speak, y'all got to speak up a little bit. Y'all are waiting for the microphone.
Art, Hunter's not by, but the applicant is requesting that they table this.
It's, I think the applicant and, and their representative are in different locations right now, so being able to see if that's viable, that's, is that a fair request?
The applicant wishes to table this. Art, do you have a problem with that?
So the, they want to, I, I, I still can't hear. They want to table this? Is that what it is?
The applicant would like to table this, Art. I'm sorry, I didn't have my microphone on. I do now.
There you go. Now I got it.
I am here now.
And I would, I withdraw my motion and then make a motion to, to table.
I've got a, a motion to table. Do I have a second?
This is John. I second it.
Okay, John seconded. Same people who made the first motion made the motion to, to accept the applicant's request to table. So I have a motion and a second. Any further? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously, so we will not do a roll call vote on that. Next item on the...
Hey, Lee, real quick, before we move to the next item.
Yes, sir, Mike.
Since they've tabled it, how long do they have until they need to be, have something to present for the next meeting? What's meeting date?
I guess so. It could be September.
We need to work quick, so we need to be on an expedited schedule to get, to get our reports in, if you want to be on the September schedule.
That's up to y'all, Mike, all right?
Okay.
It's not listed, all right.
Thanks.
Next item on the agenda is number E, correct? Okay, next item on the agenda is EST 2033, public hearing to consider the request of two hands design and development for final plat approval for Hilltop subdivision. And let's see who has that. That is...
That's mine, Commissioners. That's mine, Commissioners, and I am sharing screens. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can, Buford. Perfectly, thank you.
Okay, very good. So Commissioners, we'll try to pick up speed a little bit. This is a routine final plat, Hilltop subdivision. This is, as you see there on your map, this is on South Section Street, just south of Twin Beach Road, 29 lots, 21.175 acres, aerial view right there. And this is outside the city limits in unzoned Baldwin County. Mr. Jenwright is the engineer of record. Approval with conditions, and Commissioners, those conditions are very straightforward, which we'll get to here in a second. Here is the final plat that we are asking the planning commission to consider this evening. Like we said, 29 lots. Commissioner, I will go back here very quickly. As you see here, this is Battle's Trace on the west and south sides of this property to help you get your bearings. Just a couple of quick comments here, Commissioners. There is a Phase 2 for this project. We don't know the construction schedule for Phase 2. Phase 2 does have a preliminary plat approval. Between the two phases, that would be 37 lots. We talked about how it was not zoned. Basically, what, what issues we did have in the review process have been handled. There's a, there's a possible discussion for annexation of this property in the future. We'll, I'll actually illuminate that here in just a moment. Commissioners, to, this is more for staff and for the applicant and the applicant's representative, all of the follow-up activities that we have to do if the planning commission approves this, this item. We're trying to, what we're trying to do is, because there's several things that have to be done, we try to memorialize that in the staff reports, we have step-by-step directions. These are not things that are incomplete by any means, and I think y'all have seen this before. This is actually condition of approval three. We'll back reference these items. This is where we clarify the maintenance and guarantee agreement, who signs it, for how long it is, that sort of thing, where the, where the expiration dates are. Something that we did, something that's not reflected in your packet that I'm memorializing here, and this is based upon some legal advice we have, is that the principal for the maintenance bond shall be the subdivider. The subdivider and a contractor may be co-principals. And then continuing on with the follow-up activities, same situation for the performance bond, this one, this is going to be one of, we still, will still have a few subdivisions with performance bonds. O and M, the O and M plan and agreement, we're memorializing that. Let's talk about a possible annexation. The developer contacted staff and expressed an interest in possibly annexing this into the city. What we wanted to memorialize here and make certain the planning commission was aware, we don't know if the applicant will make a direct annexation request directly to the city council, or if they will make a conditional annexation. If they request a conditional annexation, that will come through this planning commission. Where that will affect it and what we're notifying the planning commission of is that the, as we stand, the utilities furnished by the city of Fairhope would be dedicated to the city when we go through that dedication process. If there is a desire to annex this into the city, that dedication process will include the right-of-ways and the drainage within the right-of-ways. So we wanted to make certain we properly memorialized that for future reference so that it's not a surprise if there is a future request for annexation. So our staff recommendation, Commissioners, we had an issue with common area three, as you see there, in condition of approval one, and we appreciate the developer and the engineer of record for helping us with that. And so just to read it real quick, the portion of common area number three between lots three and four, as well as a portion of common area three southeast of lots three through five adjacent to the entirety of the length of lot three through five shall be improved to allow safe access by a wastewater vacuum truck if they need to get in there for maintenance purposes or cleanout purposes. And that would call, they would have to revise some of the landscape drawings to make that work together, and so we appreciate the developer for working with us on that. A standard condition of approval, completion of any punch list items, because our code enforcement officer will probably, will, will, will ask them to make one more pass through the site before we sign the plat. And then, as we said earlier, memorialize the follow-up activities that we saw previously as condition of, uh, condition of approval number three. So Commissioners, any, happy to answer questions on behalf of staff? Again, a routine, a routine final plat.
Buford, this is Art. What's, what's the, what's the holdup on making the decision of whether they're going to come to the city or not?
I haven't received any follow-up information from the developer, Commissioner, so, so I don't know the status, but I wanted to make certain that we pointed it out so it wouldn't be a surprise.
Well, I mean, is that supposed to be like a carrot hanging over our head? Is that what that is?
I don't, I, this is a final plat approval, Art, so it doesn't, I mean, this is just simply, did they put the improvements in that they said they were going to put in? I don't see where the annexing or not is really germane tonight.
I understand, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just not understanding what the, why that's a part of the...
I, I don't think it has anything to do with this tonight. I mean, I'm glad that Buford gave us a heads up, just so nobody's surprised, but I don't think it's really germane. Either they did what they said they were going to do and we approve it, or they didn't and we don't.
And Commissioners, and Commissioners, I appreciate, and Chairman, thank you for pointing that out. As far as the improvements that have been installed, everything is, is adequate and sufficient. And even, and if the developer does wish to, does wish to annex into the city, we have all the test reports on everything that was done that, as far as the right-of-ways, that we know they were designed and built to a public standard. So we have all the information we need to bring that into the city if they wished to. So no issues there.
All right. Does anybody wish to say anything on behalf of the developer?
Mr. Commissioner, this is Trey Jenwright. I'm here if questions come up.
Okay, Trey, thank you. I'm, I'm going to go ahead then, Trey. I'm glad to know you're here. I'm going to open the public hearing at this point, see if anybody has any comments, and then I'll, I'll turn it over to the Commissioners and see if they have any questions for you. All right, at this point, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. This is the subdivision on the west side of County Road 3, just south of Twin Beach Road. Does anybody have any questions or concerns about this subdivision? If so, now is the opportunity. All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing and turn this portion of the meeting over to the Commissioners. Commissioners, we have Trey Jenwright here on behalf of the developer. If you have any questions for him, please feel free. Or if you have any questions for staff for that, that point either.
This, this is Harry Koller. Does this subdivision back up to Rock Creek?
No, sir, this is south of the city. This is...
Oh, I'm sorry. Yep.
If you're driving, if you drive from downtown Fairhope south and cross Twin Beach Road, it's on the right-hand side of the road. It's the new one that has the, the sidewalk with the wooden little bridge going over the ditch there.
Okay, no, I apologize. I had this confused with the previous, the previous action we took.
Yes, sir, thank you, Harry.
Okay.
Commissioner, we've had, Commissioner, we've had a number of very, very positive comments about the footbridge, connect, the, the footbridge that's right along the edge of right-of-way.
I think it looks great. I can't wait until that sidewalk connects to Fairhope on one side and the Colony on the other, and then that would loop you back around to the bike trail on Scenic 98. It'd be a great bike loop for sure, and I think they did a great job on it from, I drove through it and everything looks fantastic to me, Trey. Just wanted to mention that to you because I know we, we beat you up sometimes, but that one to me looked like a home run, to be honest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any other comments, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman, case SD 20.33, Hilltop subdivision, I'm moving, we approve subject to staff recommendation.
I've got a motion to approve subject to staff recommendations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, next item on the agenda is a request of Red Barn Properties LLC for plat approval of Bell Family Subdivision, a two-lot minor division. The property's 6.8 acres. It's located on the south side of Red Barn Road, approximately 3/10 miles east of County Road 33. And Samara, that's you.
Yes. So again, this is Bell Family Subdivision, SD 20.35. It is a two-lot minor division. Again, it is located on the south side of Red Barn Road, approximately 3-point miles east of County Road 33. Here we have our zoning map and our aerial. This is unzoned Baldwin County. Here is our drawing showing our two-lot subdivision, two flag lots. The subject property is in Fairhope's ETJ, and it was therefore reviewed for our, by, under our minor subdivision regulations. At this time, they are not proposing any building of any infrastructure or any improvements. It did not trigger a traffic study. Water and gas services are available through the city of Fairhope. Electrical services will be provided by Baldwin EMC and AT&amp;T will provide services as well. The fire inspector has stated that the existing hydrant in the proximity is sufficient. Model data has been provided, the nearest hydrant is illustrated on the plat. Again, we have two flag lots. The minimum building setback lines are illustrated where the lot reaches 100 feet in width. Additionally, the applicant is requesting a sidewalk waiver stating that there are no sidewalks in the immediate vicinity. It should be noted that this application is a re-subdivision of Lot 13 of Red Barn subdivision, which was a 16-lot subdivision approved by Planning Commission in 2017.
Hey, Samara, was, was there, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but wasn't there a, I thought when they made that subdivision that they were putting deed restrictions on the lots, that the lots wouldn't be subdivided any further? And that was one of the approvals points that we looked at. Is that not the case?
This application pre, the previous application predates... This application pre, the previous application predates my being here in 2017, so if anyone is aware, I'm unaware of the specifics of that previous case.
Lee, which subdivision are you referring to?
The 13-lot subdivision that we approved out there that we loved because all of the lots were going to be six to 10 acres, that we approved, I was remembering that we were told that there would be no further subdivisions, that was going to be part of the restrictive covenants and the owners' association, and I thought that they were going to memorialize that with deed restrictions is what I'm remembering, and I'm, maybe I made that up. And I thought that, you know, when we approved, we approved the water, you know, very little water improvements, we didn't, we didn't require sidewalks, and we gave them a lot of waivers due to the fact that they said this was the Alpha and the Omega subdivision.
I remember this, Lee.
Is that just me, Holly, did I dream that, or is that?
Less than two years ago.
Yeah, it was about two and a half, three years ago.
I would have, I don't remember that one either much before I got there too.
And again, do they not need 100-foot on, on Red Barn Road, or are we just no longer requiring 100-foot frontage anymore?
Mr. Chairman, that's, that is a flag lot.
Yes, it's a flag-shaped lot. So the setback start where the lot reaches 100 feet in width, that is how it's illustrated on the plan.
Well, if I could.
You know, we started doing these things, we can start allowing anything, we could go back to Seth Moore subdivision, and he could put a little private drive at a 35-degree angle and get his 100 feet. You know, or we could, he could do a drive and get the 100 feet either way and just, anyway, I'm sorry, Samara, I interrupted you.
Well, let me give you one more. When, when we were talking about the other lot and the fire hydrant being 1,000 feet away, do your calculation on your, on your plat, tell me how far away that those houses are going to be from that fire hydrant. It'll be, it'll be about 1,200 feet.
Ken, did you have something to add?
Well, I was just going to speak to the flag lot and the setback. You know, we talked about this last week, some commissioners, talked with the staff about it. Initially had the same response you had, Lee. There's just some tension between the zoning ordinance and the, and the subdivision regulations. The subdivision regulations don't prohibit flag lots. They don't, I don't think they really talk about flag lots at all.
But, but Ken, it doesn't, but it says you have to have 100 feet on a frontage road which precludes flag lots.
That, that, that's not exactly what it says. It says you have to have 100 foot in width of a lot measured at the setback line. So that, that's where the tension between the zoning ordinance and the subdivision regulations come into play. If we were only looking at the subdivision regulations, the, I think since this is in the county, we'd do a 30-foot setback, front setback. That 30-foot setback would be 30 feet, it'd be in the two flag poles, 30 feet from Red Barn Road. But under the zoning ordinance, the definition of setback specifically references flag lots. And says that that setback is measured for, not from the right-of-way line, but from the interior lot line closest to the right-of-way line. So, so it's still a fixed point. Wherever they draw the, the interior lot line, the setback is still a fixed point, but that does get them off of the flag pole, so to speak, into the lot proper for purposes of measuring lot width. So we, we simply have that tension between the zoning ordinance, which, which contemplates the existence of flag lots, and says in that case, we would measure the setback from the interior front lot line, and then you would set a setback from there, and that's where you would measure the width, and they do have 100 feet at those points. And we may not like that set of circumstances, we can put that on our list of things to do to address some of the incongruities in these regulations, but that's what we have.
Well, you know, you know, Ken, interestingly enough, if you look at the first page of this application, there are several of these exact lots on, onto the east, over toward Slides Lane. So whoever did this subdivision obviously contemplated that.
All right, thank you, Ken. Samara, go ahead.
Okay.
Do you have anything else to add, or should I go ahead and open the public hearing at this time?
Let's see, oh, just that there were several notes that were on the initial plat about best management practices, LID techniques, and wetland delineation, and all of these notes need to be reflected on the final plat. Again, the waiver was for the sidewalk. As Buford stated before, this is follow-up activities required by the staff or the applicant. If it's the pleasure of the planning commission to approve the case, the applicant is advised that the final plat must be recorded in probate within 60 days of the final plat approval by the City of Fairhope Planning Commission, or final plat approval is null and void. And then, staff is recommending to approve with the following conditions, provision of all notes on the final plat as provided on the original SD 17.12 Red Barn subdivision. As a requirement of the previous approval, the owner of each lot shall provide to the City of Fairhope Planning Department a signed and sealed certification from the Alabama Registered Professional Civil Engineer and Wetland Specialist stating that the drainage and LID have met the City of Fairhope's drainage and LID requirements. This should be completed prior to the approval of any building permits, and lastly, the approval of the sidewalk waiver and sidewalk easement should be illustrated on the plat. And that is all.
Thank you, Samara. Does anybody wish to speak on behalf of the developer?
So, this is, this is Michael Bell. Just to give you all an idea of what I'm doing, so I've got two older daughters that have now given my wife and I our two, two first grandbabies that are now two years and younger, and they want to live next, close to grandparents. So the, the daughters are best friends, and they want to grow up next to each other with cousins growing up next to each other, and so that's why we, that's why we came and, and got this land so they would be four miles from us. Just to give you an idea, my family's been in this county for 200 years. My grandparents owned the hardware store downtown, William and Estelle Funt for 40 years. My grandmother, Marie Moore, was the city clerk for 25 years, and my great-grandfather, Pink Kramer, was the, the city barber. So we have deep roots in Fairhope, and that's why they want to be here. They, they want to raise their family in the country and have them go to Fairhope High School. And this is their house that they're going to build, and that, it'll probably be the house that they die in, just like the house that we, their mother and I built that will die in, so. So it just gives you an idea of what we're doing.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, may I interject?
Well, let me go ahead and just finish the public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Buford, and then we'll come right back. Anybody else from, anybody from the public wish to speak to this item?
Mr. Chairman, this is Dave Deale with SD Civil.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we did the survey for this family division. We provided a fire flow test and worked, Mr. Barber. The fire flow out there calculated is 2,241 at 20 PSI, so they got plenty of fire flow, and there's a fire hydrant right at our northwest corner on Red Barn Road. And as Ken said, the subdivision regulations do state that the required width is measured at the front setback.
I thought he said, I thought he said that the, that that was the zoning regulation. I think the subdivision reg says 100 feet at the publicly maintained highway.
Now, at the setback.
That's the subdivision regs, Ken?
Uh.
I thought you were saying the subdivision regs and the zoning were in conflict on that.
No, no, the conflict is that the subdivision regulations specifically say that the distance of the setback is measured from the right-of-way line. The, the zoning ordinance says you measure from, sometimes the right-of-way line, but it specifically says, but as to flag lots, you measure the setback from the interior lot line closest to the right-of-way line. So it, so the tension is where you start measuring from.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I can, if I can add, under the definitions of lot width, it's the horizontal distance between sidelines of the lot when measured parallel to the street right of way at the building setback line. So there is a little gray area there as far as where, where that's measured, but we just, we took that to mean parallel to the street at the setback line.
So, Mr. Chairman, have we, are we out of the public hearing?
Not yet. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this item? If not, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. All right, Buford?
And so Chairman, Commissioners, just to answer a question from several minutes ago, I wanted to make certain that we had this on, that we had this as part of the record of discussion of this item. The chairman is correct, there is a prohibition against re-subdivision in the, in the, in the covenants and restrictions on, on this subdivision, and, but, it, I'll just read it. "No lot shall for any reason be re-subdivided into lots of a size comprising less than two acres, subject to any and all applicable laws and/or ordinances by the City of Fairhope and Baldwin County, Alabama." So the subdivision that is before the planning commission now, each lot is 3.4 acres. So there's no conflict, so this, this subdivision, as requested, is not in conflict with the covenants and restrictions. What I believe happened, Commissioners, is that, for whatever reason, that condition of approval was not reflected in the staff reports that we examined on the previous subdivision, but I was able to find it and look it up, and so, so, so the chairman is correct, but there's no conflict.
Do we have the recording for that meeting?
Chairman, that predates me as well, this was early 2017. But I guess the main thing is that we, you know, that your memory was correct, and I appreciate you for remembering that and for advising us so I could look it up. I guess the second point, Commissioners, is that the Baldwin County subdivision regulations does have a definition of a flag lot, and there are times, I think historically, that this planning commission has honored that allowance for flag lots. But that is certainly something we need to put in a future amendment to the subdivision regulations.
Well, we did, and Buford, we did on this, and Holly, if I speak too far, I want, you were here then, Holly, and if I speak too far, please stop me, but we, at this time, did not allow flag lots, and in this particular case, we did, because we were so impressed that the lots were six, eight, 10, 12 acres in this subdivision, and we had had a prior, we had a prior subdivision that came here that we voted down. I voted for it because it met the subdivision regs, but it got voted down, I believe, seven to three, and we got sued and got a order from Judge Reed that we had to vote to approve it, because even though the lots were post-sized lots out there, it met all the subdivision regs. In this particular case, when they came, we were very impressed because all the lots were going to be very large, the neighbors, including the bishops across the street and Bruce Larson downhill, where all this water rides right across his studio, were very impressed and in supportive. Part of the reason is that they promised that this would never be subdivided again, and that they were going to put in their subdivision regs that lots could not be subdivided again. And with that, we allowed flag, flag lots, we allowed certain things on the water retention, we allowed them to not have the sidewalks, and to me, if we're going to start allowing this thing to be chopped up, I mean, I feel like, you know, we were duped at that point because we gave a lot of concessions based on their word. And we might want to go back on this and say, sure, but do sidewalks along County Road 33, do sidewalks along Red Barn Road, and we want a comprehensive water retention for the entire subdivision as flowed, because my concern is, you start dividing every single one of these lots, like say, the 12-acre lots into five lots, and, and everybody nilly-willy does a little water retention their way, which for one lot might be a little swell 20 feet long, 10 feet wide by 3 feet, and then it's done at time of building permit, and then Mama says, I don't like that really swell back there, water's, you know, puddling up in it, which is what it's supposed to do, and so she gets Buddy Danny to drop off 10, 20 yards of, of, you know, sand and fills it in, and all of a sudden, you've got no water retention and, and nothing. And I just, I don't know, Holly, am I off-base, so tell me, and I'll shut up and, and sit back and just, you know.
I remember, and I believe there was like a private road agreement too that we were trying to work on, because that would have been the only way on a flag-shaped lot that you could get a mortgage, was a private road agreement. So, I don't know, I mean, we're, you know, I, I love the idea of what he wants to do with his kids, but I, I don't know if that's going to be the same story, you know, from here on out. Where do we, where do we set precedence? Because that's what, that's what we as a planning commissioner are always trying to do, is be consistent in everything we do, so that we can stand behind what we're doing and make sure that we're being fair for everyone, rather than what, you know, is laid out in front of us. And all we can do is what is presented in front of us and work with the best thing that we've got. So, I don't know.
Can I make it into the commissioner?
Go ahead, Mike.
So, the way I looked at it, I just tried to approach it from a common sense approach. If I just bought the lot as is and went in and put a 4,000-square-foot house, the amount of water coming off that roof is going to be the same as if I split it for the girls and they build two 2,000-square-foot houses. I'm not trying to do anything that brings detriment to the area. In fact, the reason why we bought the area is the plans that we have to, to make it really a fantastic area to go out there and look. And if you look to the northeast, you see those long rectangle lots, those are all two-acre, about two and some change lots, and then there's another flag lot that's just east. So I, I don't think what I'm doing is detrimental to the overall subdivision. I think it still falls within the spirit of the law of, or the spirit of the rule of what was intended out in the country here on Red Barn Road.
I think the drive's going to have more water runoff than the entire house, but I'm not talking about the intended, I mean, I have no problem if you go buy a six-acre somewhere else and do two, three-acre lots. I'm just saying what, what was sold to us when we approved this, and what we were told when we approved this, and now it's the opposite. And I mean, I understand, you know, I bought land next door to me and across the street from me, hoping that at some point my kids will come in and, and. from me, hoping that at some point my kids will come in and, and move around me, you know. Maybe they will, maybe they won't. But, you know, I mean, heck, I guess we might as well just shut the commission down if we're going to start allowing no water, no sidewalks, flag lots, just as long as it's family members moving in, doesn't matter. I mean, I don't.
Well, the question, the question, I guess I would, I would have, not having been there when all that was going down, then, it sounds like y'all took the, the word of the developer, whoever subdivided the property, that that was the way it was going to be, and maybe it should have, then, maybe we should begin to include that information on, on a plat to, to memorialize.
Well, I thought that, I thought it was going to be, and I'd like to go back and see the, I'd like to go back and hear the recording and see the motion that was made, because I thought that that was part of it, with all the concessions that we gave.
And the video is available, it's April 3, 2017, 1 hour 25 minutes. So it is still online, hasn't been discarded, so that, that is available.
Because I might be remembering it totally incorrectly, and I'd just like to.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, I have the minutes of that meeting in front of me right now.
Do you have the plat, Buford?
No, sir. No, sir. But I can find it.
Let me interject here. It's harkened a watershed, and the, the objections made by the neighborhood based on restrictive covenants. It's, you know, I understand your concerns, Mr. Chairman, but it, as I advise you in dealing with the watershed application, it's, it's.
Can you unshare your screen real quick?
The, the, it's just not the role of the commission to be the enforcer of restrictive covenants. Now, if we put something on the plat, if they make a representation to you that's material to the approval of the subdivision, then we should insist it gets on a plat, and then it is something that the commission takes into account.
Yeah, I, I'm very clear with that, Ken, and I thought that it was, from my memory. And again, my memory may not be correct, but I was thinking that, that that was part of the motion.
Well, it may have been, we're just hamstrung, because you have a great memory, and now we're looking for that information.
I might not. I saw a replay of the Mike Tyson Buster Douglas fight, and I, I thought it was a three-round fight, and it won 11 rounds. So I'm, and I mean that seriously. I don't know how good my memory is, that's why I was asking Holly if she remembered it the same way that I did.
We need to look at the plat, though.
Chairman, Commissioners, I have the minutes of that meeting on screen right now.
But does it matter, Ken, if it's on the screen and it's in the minutes, if it didn't make it to the plat?
Well, we're, I don't know the answer to that question off the top of my head. We're, we're better off than it just being discussed at the meeting, if it makes it into the minutes. But, but if it's a material condition relating to, you know, the physical configuration of a lot, and what is going to, what can and can't be done on it in the future, you should make it onto the plat. Because then we know, and the whole world knows, every lot by, you know, potential lot by in the future may not know, they need to go look through reams of paper at the city planning department to figure out, well, maybe there's something else that applies to this land. You go to the, go to the public records, and you can find the deeds and restrictive covenants. If you go to the public records, you can find the subdivision plat with what should include the material limitations that were imposed on our approval.
Well, I'm looking at what, I guess Buford just put on the, on the screen, and I don't see whether there's any, anything noted about that.
That's the final plat approval.
Except for a buffer.
Mr. Chairman, the, the comments that you're speaking of would have been at the preliminary plat.
Right, that's what I'm saying. That was the final plat approval that Buford put up, which wouldn't reference that. I'm talking about, what would reference that would be the motion to approve. I'd like to table 30 days and see what the motion was, is what I'd like to do. Otherwise, I'm personally going to vote against it, and I've got no heartburn for anybody that votes for it whatsoever. Because, you know, y'all probably all have different perspective than I do on this.
Mr. Chairman, and, and to fulfill Ken's request, the recorded plat is on screen right now.
Could you enlarge that a little bit?
You think I can read, you think I can read that?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, Buford, I, Buford, I trust you that the recorded plat doesn't have that on there. I would just like to see what the motion said and hear what the developer said during the meeting. That's all. You know, for me to vote for it, I don't feel comfortable voting for it unless I hear that. With that said, I, I don't have, you know, everybody can vote their own way, I have no issue with, with this passing. I just have a pain of conscience voting for it myself.
Well, and so Commissioners, I've put, I've put the meeting minutes back on screen, if that helps.
Right, but that's the final plat, Buford. The preliminary plat is the one that would have any conditions of approval.
Commissioners, and maybe Emily can remember, was this a concurrent preliminary and final? Because no improvements were installed.
Uh, no, it was not.
It had to have been four less, four lots or less to get.
It, it was not. It was a preliminary with the final, and they did have to install improvements. They installed the fire hydrants, and they did the fire hydrants, and they had some water improvements that they had to do down along Red Barn Road, if I remember correctly. They had some guys out there for a couple of weeks.
Wasn't there also a, that they were going to have to have some kind of agreement in the covenant restriction of who was going to maintain the road?
Yeah. I'm sorry. All right. Okay, well, we got to get somewhere, Commissioners, so I'll accept the motion.
So Commissioners, this is Mike again, if I can make one more comment. So obviously, we go, when I went and looked at this, this was really clear-cut. And so, with the plat, I proceeded forward with a survey and the, if there may, a note that they're not allowed to go and do that, and honestly, I'd have moved on, you know, someplace else.
Okay.
So I, I've got, I've got a significant investment in this already, based upon the fact that I'm operating under the, the conditions that this, this is a pretty strict order and, and I'm sense and able to go do it, so.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, do we do, we do a, are we, are we still discussing, or we need a motion?
We can discuss all we want.
Oh, I don't want to discuss.
No, we can take a motion then. If anybody, if nobody else has anything to add, we, we can always take a motion.
Anybody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve.
I'll make a motion. Mr. Chairman, SD 20.35, Bell Family Subdivision, I move that we approve the subject staff recommendation.
I've got a motion to approve subject staff recommendations. I've got a second from, from Kevin. Is there any further discussion?
Yes.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. And I'll say nay.
Nay. I, I need to see what the staff and recommendations are again in front of, all I see is you guys.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote then. Lee Turner is, are you ready, Emily? Lee Turner is nay. Art made the motion, so he is, is aye.
Aye.
Um, Harry Kohler, how did you vote?
Nay.
He voted nay. John?
Yay.
John voted yes, yay. Clarice?
Yes.
Clarice voted yes. Kevin seconded, so he's yes, and Holly is nay.
Yeah.
So what is that? I'm sorry? So what is that, Emily?
That's three, yes.
And how many, four?
Four.
So it passes four to three, correct? All right, subdivision passes four to three. All right, next item on the agenda, two-lot minor subdivision for Jason Tickle for Shoshone subdivision, and that's SD 20.06. And if I, or 20.36, excuse me, and that's Samara.
Give me just one second.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, and while she's getting ready, I know it can be annoying and time-consuming, but a lot of these things that you see now, that we add to staff reports to memorialize certain things, what we just went through is why we do that now.
Mm-hmm. I get it. But I tell you what, it makes me, on subdivisions, want to make, make exceptions less and less and less. You know, we make a half dozen, you know, concessions based upon the word of the developer, and then, you know, it doesn't get passed along, because it's difficult, you know, staffs, people change, administrations change, follow-up changes, and, you know, 30 noes can be undone by one yes, and it makes me, you know, want to not make exceptions, like on the one we had with the Langleys earlier. You know, you start making exceptions, and then another subdivision comes up, when you've got, you know, two, two-point acres, then all of a sudden, a couple more 1.4 acres, and so forth and so on. So, you know, you don't want to be a, you know, hardtail on any of this stuff, but on the other hand, when you do make exceptions and work with somebody, when something's really nice, and then all of a sudden, we sneak, we now see that we've got the potential on 110 acres that we did there, we've got the potential for 50 more lots. You know, we've just opened up the door for 50 more lots, with individual lots doing their own, you know, as long as they don't come more than four at a time, you know, which, somebody's got a 12-acre lot, they can do four, and then they can do four more. And so as long as they don't come, you know, more than four at a time, we can have 50 more lots in this one subdivision, with no sidewalks, no green space, no water retention, no nothing. And that's what we've just approved, and that, that's what bothers me. You know, allowing the flag lots like this and the willy-nilly, it's just like, come on in, divide it today, we'll give you 50 exceptions, then just come on in 50 more times. You know, if you look at how many subdivisions we're going to approve today, you know, what, 16, 16 lots without any water retention, or what have you, when you look at it, you know, lot by lot. Anyway, I'm off my soapbox, so I will shut up, so we can get the, the meeting going, and I apologize for taking up Samara's time. Go ahead, and I apologize.
It's okay. We are at the two-lot minor subdivision, Shio Wasina subdivision, SD 20.36. Again, this is a public hearing to consider the request of Jason Tickle for plat approval of Shio Wasina subdivision and two-lot minor subdivision. The property is approximately three acres and is located on the west side of Main Street between Chapman Street and Taylor Street. Here is our zoning map and our aerial view. This property is owned R1, low density, low-density, single-family. Here is our, our survey showing our two lots. We have a flag lot in the rear, and then Lot 2 in the front. The subject property is in the corporate limits of the City of Fairhope and was therefore reviewed accordingly. The proposed subdivision does not include any building of any infrastructure. It did not trigger a traffic study concerning stormwater runoff, none of the existing flow patterns will be changed. Water, sewer, and gas services are available through the City of Fairhope, electrical services via Riviera, and AT&amp;T will provide services as well. The fire inspector has stated that the existing hydrant in the proximity is sufficient. Flow model data has been submitted by the applicant. The fire hydrant is not illustrated on the plat and would therefore be a condition of The preliminary plat illustrates a two-lot subdivision with one, with Lot 1 illustrated as a flag-shaped lot. It should be noted that the lot width requirement for R1-owned property is 100 feet. Therefore, the building setback for Lot 1 should be revised to reflect a 40-foot building setback where the lot reaches 100 feet in width. Additionally, the applicant has requested a sidewalk waiver stating that there are existing sidewalks on Main Street across from the subject property. Again, that's the waiver request for sidewalks. Follow-up information, reminding the applicant and staff that they have 60 days for approval. Staff recommendations, we recommend to approve with conditions, and they are to illustrate the existing hydrant on the plat, to revise the setback line for Lot 1 to reflect the 40-foot building setback where the lot reaches 100 feet in width, and to approve the sidewalk waiver with the illustration of a sidewalk easement.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody wish to speak on behalf of the developer to this item? All right, I'll go ahead and at that, in that case, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody wish to, anybody from the public wish to speak to this?
Yeah.
All right, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time. I think Shio Wasina means happiness in Japanese, if I'm correct. If anybody's curious, I think that's where the name comes from.
Now, how, now how did you know that?
Uh, Google. From living in Okinawa, I, I remember.
I thought you were a man of all things.
All of my Japanese I remember from living over there.
All right.
All right, Commissioners, any questions, concerns for staff? Otherwise, I'll accept a motion.
This is John, I move that we.
Come on, Mike, step up.
This is John, I move that we accept case SD 20.36 with staff recommendations.
I've got a motion to accept.
Second.
And I have a second. Any further discussion?
Wait a minute, and that, that's with sidewalk waiver?
That's with the sidewalk waiver with the, but including a right-of-way is standard operating procedure. All right, any further discussion?
Wait a minute, including what?
Uh, it does include a sidewalk waiver, but with the waiver, the staff always includes a right-of-way in case someone wants to come back later.
Is that shown on the plat, a sidewalk for easement for future sidewalk?
The sidewalk that goes through Montrose was put on the west side. I was actually a part of that many moons ago. That was Trailblazers that built that sidewalk, and it was put on that side for a reason, because it, it did less, it did less. Now, maybe someday there'll be another one on the other side, but I doubt it. But I just want to be clear that, what, what it, what it is, that, John, what was, what was your motion again?
To approve SD 20.36 with staff recommendations.
And the staff recommendation includes, Art, the staff recommendation includes that rather than requiring a sidewalk, that a right-of-way is required.
And added to the plat.
And added on the plat.
It does say that, says approval of the sidewalk waiver.
An illustration of a sidewalk easement. Right.
What, what now?
Part three, 3A says illustration of sidewalk easement.
I don't see a 3A.
It's on the screen, it's on the screen, and what, that's not what's in the package.
Well, I can't see the screen either.
Sorry.
All right, now I got it, illustration of a sidewalk.
Okay, and Emily, we need to.
So that wasn't on there?
Yeah.
That wasn't on the, that wasn't on our packet?
It's not.
Correct, that was added.
It is not, and we need to make sure that Emily notes that when we check the minutes of the, of the meeting. We need to make sure, to use Buford's word, that that's memorialized.
Correct.
All right.
You mean Art doesn't trust us?
Well, we'll just see what happened on the last one. Let me, and let me say this, I'm going to get on my soapbox, and I promise I'll get off. But with us allowing these flag lots, you know, at the last election, a lot of people were saying that, you know, too much development, we want smart development, and allowing flag lots like this, there aren't many pieces of real estate that have more than, you know, 30,000 square feet, say 40, that can't be subdivided into two now, and we just have to decide, is that what we want? I always thought that we just. I always thought that we didn't allow flag lots, but the flag lots going up and down the bay, you know, we can allow every single bay lot to be subdivided, we can allow every, you know, tons of river lots being subdivided. I just think that, you know, Seth could probably come back, but they don't, they want both of those lots on the, on the river, but, I mean, it just really opens up a can, so I just want everybody to think about that and decide, is that really, do we want to allow just carte blanche, you know, flag lots everywhere? Does every single square foot of property need to be developed?
There's a lot, there's a lot of feedback going. Somebody's got their phone too close to their computer or something.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Anyway, I've got a motion, a second, and I have spoken my piece, so if there's no other further discussion-
Well, wait a minute, I want to go back, wait a minute, wait a minute, I want to go back to what you just said.
Yes, sir.
Thing is not just in, the thing is not just on Fish River, and it's not just in Montrose, but it's all the way down, uh, all the way down the bay within the, hell, all the way down the bay period. But you've got these massive lots, for example, in Montrose and down on the bay, but they're, they're, they're big lots, three acres, four acres, two acres, whatever, but they're not wide enough to where you can, you can peel off 100-foot lot without having a flag lot. So, I mean, it's, I'm not sure we want to be in a position to hang string all those people, uh, with those monster lots like that.
Well, that, that's true, that is absolutely true, Art, and that's the positive side of doing what we're doing. The negative side is, how many lots, over the years, are you allowing with no water retention, no additional sidewalks, no additional green space, you know, piece by piece? You know, the old saying that you don't die by one knockout punch, you, you know, die by a thousand scratches. Um, but I'm, I'm just throwing that out, you know, to think about for the future, if this is, you know, how we want it, that's fine. So, SD 20.36?
Excuse me.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, Lee, this is Jason Tickle.
Yes, sir, hey, Jason.
And I'm sorry to, to interject here, but just to set your mind at ease, not that this is, you know, relevant to this subdivision, but the parcel we are subdividing, Lee, is one of two parcels that we bought. The 50-acre swatch up to the north is also part of ours, so actually, we, we hope to combine that in and we will have 100 feet of front, not only the lot we're subdividing off, but on our primary home as well.
Yeah, and, and Jason, I, you, you've got my support on this. I'm talking more from a soapbox, you know, theory and a principle, not, you know, where the rubber hits the road on this one. I'm just saying, thinking of where my parents live, my parents can take their two lots to four, my aunt and uncle can take their two to four, and every one of their neighbors are, and do we want houses double-thick on 100-foot lots going up and down the bay, throughout the fruits and nuts, all the way down to Mullet Point? And maybe we do. I'm just saying, you know, that that's something that we really need to think of, is, is we open this up. I'm not talking specific to this one, but as, I'm just saying that as we start allowing flag lots, we need to know, you know, what we're actually allowing in the future, and how many hundreds of houses additional we could let up and down the bay without any water retention, any additional sidewalks, any traffic studies, anything, and just as long as people understand that anytime somebody's got a, you know, a lot that's 400 feet deep, it's a, you know, 110 feet wide or 120 feet wide, you know, they can divide it up.
Lee, can we, before we go any further, could, there's a lot of background noise coming through, could everybody-
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we all probably need to hit mute when we're not speaking ourselves. But anyway, going back to 20.36, um, all in favor to, let me go back and say that the motion is to approve staff recommendations, which include the approval of the sidewalk waiver, but with the illustration of a sidewalk easement. So, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay? All right, motion passes unanimously. Next item on the agenda, public hearing to consider the request of FST Floyd Enfinger for the final, excuse me, for plat approval of Fairhope Farms, a two-lot minor subdivision. The property is approximately 23 acres and is located at the west side of Thompson Hall Road between Fairhope Avenue and Morphe Avenue. And let's see, we've got Carla on that one.
Yes, sir, last but not least. Oh, hold on, let me flip this. Okay, so we have case SD 20.37, Fairhope Farms, a two-lot minor subdivision for approval. We have, um, the summary is, the public here to consider the request of ST Floyd Enfinger, applicant for a two-lot minor subdivision. The property is located on the west side of Thompson Hall Road between Fairhope Avenue and Morphe Avenue and is owned R8. The property is approximately 23 acres and the applicant desires to divide the property into two separate lots. The proposed Lot One has an existing dwelling on the property and is approximately 13.55 acres. The proposed Lot Two also has an existing dwelling and is approximately 9.20 acres. The applicant is requesting a sidewalk waiver. Here we have the zoning map to the left and the aerial map to the right of the subject site. The subject property is in Fairhope planning jurisdiction and must meet the subdivision regulations. The proposed subdivision is a minor subdivision, has been reviewed accordingly. Fairhope subdivision regulations, Article Six, Section D, requires the provision of sidewalks along all streets in the planning jurisdiction. The applicant does not wish to install sidewalks above and beyond the sidewalks that are in place currently within the city of Fairhope's right-of-way and is requesting a sidewalk waiver. The proposed subdivision did not trigger a traffic study, nor will any of the stormwater flow patterns be changed. Water, gas, and sewer services will be provided by the city of Fairhope, power supplied by Riviera Utilities, and the telephone service provided is AT&amp;T. The plat fails to depict the leasehold certificate in the signature block for the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation. Thus, a revised plat illustrating that information will be required. Here we have an image of the preliminary plat, that slang out the existing dwellings and the proposed location of the lots. Waiver request, again, as we stated, they're requesting a sidewalk waiver. There are currently sidewalks that are along the entire property except for a portion of Lot One that has furnished along Morphe Avenue. The applicant does not wish to install sidewalks above and beyond the sidewalks that are in place currently within the city of Fairhope's right-of-way and is thus requesting the waiver. Sidewalk waivers may be granted where the planning commission finds that conditions in accordance with Article Six, Section D regarding sidewalks exist and are met. The subdivision regulations contain criteria for Article Four, B2, and Three out of the five of the requirements have been met while the others two are not applicable. Follow-up activities: If it is the pleasure of the planning commission to approve subject case, the applicant is advised that the final plat must be recorded and then judge appropriate office within 60 days of the final plat approval by the city of Fairhope's planning commission or the final plat approval is null and void. Recommendations: Staff recommends approval of SD 20.37 conditional upon the following: The approval of a sidewalk waiver, revisions of the plat to include a leasehold certificate and a signature block for the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation. That's it.
Thank you, Carla.
You're welcome, thank you.
Anybody wish to make a presentation on behalf of the applicant?
Uh, I'm here to answer questions, this is Hunter Smith.
All right, thank you, Hunter. All right, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. Does anybody from the public wish to speak to this? In that case, I'll close the public hearing at this time, turn the meeting over to the commissioners. Carla, if I remember correctly, there's a sidewalk all along Fairhope Avenue, there's a sidewalk along Thompson Hall Road, and there's one on the other side of Morphe, but not their side of Morphe, is that correct?
Uh, yes, sir. I don't know if you can see the image, but I pulled it up on Google just in case you asked. This is where the sidewalk is, and then it stops here, and then this is the direction of their property here, that doesn't have the sidewalk.
So, part of their sidewalk has, part of their property has a sidewalk and not the other part?
Correct.
I think, I don't know what the other commissioners think, I think they ought to take that sidewalk to the end of their property, that way if anybody next door wants to connect to it, they can walk along the sidewalk without crossing Morphe and get all the way to Walmart. That's my personal belief.
Mr. Chairman, doing that gets us back to the preliminary plat situation because that's installing infrastructure.
So you're saying we can't require sidewalks on minor subdivisions? In that case, then why don't we take it out of the minor subdivision? If we can't require minor subdivisions to install sidewalks, then why do we have it in there so we require them to have sidewalks?
Minor subdivisions do not install infrastructure.
I think what we're saying, maybe without saying, is, saying it is, an application for a minor subdivision that requests a waiver from the obligation to install what would otherwise be required improvements, really isn't an application for a minor subdivision and shouldn't be tendered to the commission as such.
So what does that mean? Ken?
I'm not following, if it's not there, why are they having a waiver request?
I mean, why do we need waiver requests, is all I'm saying.
If you don't have to have it.
I mean, are we saying that every single minor subdivision's gonna be non-compliant with subdivision regulations? That just doesn't sit well with me.
What, what, what happened apparently is we, we're letting the number of lots and the owners' desire not to install required improvements drive the labeling of this application as a minor subdivision, when, when perhaps looked at more accurately, the subdivision regulations on their face require the installation of sidewalks, that's an improvement, so this can't be a minor subdivision. You granted the waiver, if you granted the waiver-
Unless you change the definition of, of a minor subdivision.
I'm sorry, Art, what'd you say?
Unless you change the definition of a minor subdivision.
Yes. By definition, it's four fewer lots. It's four fewer lots that require the installation of no infrastructure.
Is a sidewalk considered infrastructure?
Yes.
Yeah.
So it requires it, but the planning commission decides if the waiver's granted, so then what if no infrastructure is installed? Can we make it final in conjunction if waivers are granted?
But, but how do you know until you go to the planning commission as to whether they're gonna, we, we are going to require the installation of a sidewalk?
What about Emily's idea? Can we just have a note put down that on building permit, sidewalk will be installed?
What was that, say it again, Lee?
There isn't gonna be a building permit.
Yeah, I mean, if anybody adds anything else there, there would be.
Well, that's true.
I mean, in other words, if they're just dividing it off and giving, you know, the family member a parcel, like we've heard, you know, ad nauseam tonight, that's fine, but if somebody wants to add something else there, then they gotta put the sidewalk in at that point.
Well, that's what they're doing here, too, and I just think, don't both lots already have residences on them?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, both of the lots have existing residents on them currently.
Unless they undertake some significant renovations, there probably won't be a bill, any building permits on these lots for a while.
Maybe not, but at least we've got it on there memorialized.
Oh, no, I'm not, I'm not being critical of your proposal, I'm just suggesting it, it might be a while before we got those sidewalks.
I mean, I, I don't remember in the past where we ever considered a sidewalk as a major infrastructure to where people had to go, because they don't have to be engineered. I mean, Single Tax Corporation, we build them all the time without engineering them, we just go get a, a land disturbance permit, dig a, you know, four inches deep, five feet wide, and just pour concrete.
Mr. Chairman, if I can read, um, out of the subdivision regulations, procedure exceptions, um, minor subdivisions, the regulation state, for plating of four or fewer lots where there are no new streets or rights-of-way and no new utility mains required, application for simultaneous preliminary and final approval may be made to the planning commission. Submittal shall go, submittal shall in all other respects meet the minimum requirements of these regulations.
So there you go, so it doesn't mention sidewalks, a sidewalk's not, not considered infrastructure improvement on that. Thank you, Emily. All right.
So you, so you circle back to, you circle back to, the planning commission considers whether they want to approve the waiver.
That definition was changed, and it's now rights of streets, rights-of-way, utility mains, or any other public infrastructure.
So, in other words, if we gotta have a, a, one fire plug for a 20-foot sidewalk, I mean, by that, what about a, what about a driveway that goes across a right-of-way? Would that not trigger it?
Well, I think that might be going a little far, but-
I don't know, I mean, any structure, I mean, a driveway's bigger than a sidewalk.
But that's not public. The sidewalk is public, it's in the public right-of-way.
You got, you got concrete going across the public right-of-way, and you get a right-of-way permit to install that.
For it.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Hunter Smith's on, on the call, and has, we have a function, he can raise his hand and speak, so I think that means he-
Yeah, go ahead, go ahead, Hunter.
Okay, so I thought I might, I might, I might can add a little insight here. There's sidewalks around the entire perimeter, except where, uh, y'all are looking in that, where, where it goes to cross Morphe Avenue, but if you, if you did extend it to the west, there's a, a drain or some culverts that go under the, under the road right there at the west side, which I think might be why the sidewalk crosses the street in this particular place, because once you get to this head wall down, kind of toward the west end of the property, it's, I don't know that you could install a sidewalk, you'd have to build a boardwalk or a bridge or something over this little branch that runs back there.
I understand that, I understand that. Cliff Pittman did one at Fox Hollow, that picture right there is old, there's a sidewalk that goes right along that fence, on the left, not on that side, but on the other side, there's a fence that goes, there's a sidewalk that goes right along that fence. Cliff Pittman built a wooden, uh, boardwalk across that ditch you're referring to at Fox Hollow, and then it, it ties into the subdivision sidewalk right there, then it goes on up to County Road 13 where it stops, and hopefully it'll eventually be punched from County Road 13 to Bishop Road, and there's one little section from Bishop Road that will hopefully at some point be punched into, uh, whatever that road's called, um, the subdivision, um, Holling, Hollings, uh, the one that backs up to Nichols on one side and Morphe on the other. Anyway, um-
Um, just, um-
Go ahead, Holling.
Were you asking me an address?
I'm sorry?
You were asking me an address?
No, no, I just, I was, I was just pontificating more than I needed to, and I'm getting on my, I think, you know, I, I'm making this meeting take way too long and I apologize, but I really think that if every single minor subdivision is gonna have waivers, I think we need to go back to the wording that Emily read and get off of this wording where we can require sidewalks on minors, otherwise I'm gonna start voting against every single one of them, because I think if we have a sidewalk requirement on a minor subdivision, and then every single time we're required to make a waiver for a sidewalk or a fire hydrant, I think that's ridiculous. And I think this is one of those things that when you make changes, you think you're making them- making improvements, but sometimes you go backwards. And I think this is a case of that, to require them to come back. And I'm ready to vote for this, you know, Single Tax Corporation or somebody can come back if need be and punch this extra 50 feet. It's not much of a cost or 100 feet of sidewalk. It's not a real big deal. But I think we need to make a change ASAP that if we're going to require sidewalks on minor subdivisions, I think we need to either A, say that we don't require sidewalks on minor subdivisions, or B, say there's no such thing as a minor subdivision anymore if every single one is going to be requiring a waiver. I mean, at least in a waiver, we're hopefully getting, you know, items on the plat and the staffs following up to at least get right-of-ways that can save, you know, thousands of dollars in, you know, months of time when somebody does, i.e. the city or Single Tax Corporation, come back and build sidewalks where the developer wasn't required to at public expense instead of the developer's expense. But, but that's, that's my feeling, that I think we need to change back to Emily's or, or put an exclusion that sidewalks are not considered a substantial enough improvement that they require a, a major subdivision.
So, Mr. Chairman, here's an alternative, and we'll let Ken advise us if this is something the planning commission shouldn't do or can't do. If you approve the minor sub, approve the subdivision and require that they install the sidewalks and ignore whether or not it's a major subdivision or a minor subdivision, they would have 60 days to complete those improvements and bring in the plat, get it signed, and get it recorded. If, as an alternative, would the planning commission consider, approve it with the condition they build the sidewalks, but grant them a slightly longer amount of time to build the sidewalks, get the plat prepared, get the plat signed, and get the plat recorded. So give them 90 days or 120 days. If they don't accomplish all of that in that timeframe, their approval expires.
I don't have a problem with that. How do the other commissioners feel?
I'm good with that, too.
Ken, are you okay with that?
Well, then, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. What, when you grant them a, well, I don't know, I guess you call it a waiver. But I mean, if you say, if you're telling them you got to put a 10-foot sidewalk easement in there on their property.
No, sir, no, sir, no, sir.
Are you not doing the same thing?
No, sir, no, sir.
You're not requiring them to build, you're not requiring them to go out in the middle of, in the middle of somewhere that doesn't even have sidewalks and, and put a sidewalk in within 60 or 90 days, though, right?
These are city streets. These are city streets, so the City of Fairhope controls that right-of-way and could grant them a right-of-way permit.
Is the, is the one that we're talking about right now, is that, wait a minute. That's, is that, is it in the city limits?
Yes, sir.
It's in the Fairhope Planning Jurisdiction.
No, it's owned RA.
It is, which was the one, it was one we just had that was.
Yeah, this one's in the city limits. It's just, you know, Thompson Hall Road that has a sidewalk, that full length of Thompson Hall Road, it stops at Morphy, is the eastern boundary. The northern boundary is Fairhope Avenue, and the Single Tax Corporation built the sidewalk that full length. And then the, the southern boundary is Morphy, and the Single Tax Corporation built a sidewalk on the opposite side of Morphy, the full length, and the City of Fairhope built a little ponytail that crosses half of this property that connects to Thompson Hall.
Well, my point of asking the question is, if you're going to have, if you're going to have a piece of property that's just outside the city limits but in the planning jurisdiction, you're going to, I mean, if, if you, if you require them to, to leave a 10-foot easement, we've done that 150,000 times.
We, we have, we have, Art.
You're doing the same thing. You're going to make them, wait a minute, you're going to make them build that within 100, 100 days or 90 days?
Well, we could. I mean, look at the one.
Instead of putting an easement?
Well, look at the one that we just approved on the final plat approval we just did on County Road 3 just a few moments ago. That's out of the city limits. The one that Buford was saying was out of the city limits. That's out of the city limits, and we required a sidewalk on County Road 3 there, and it's a darn nice subdivision, I mean, a darn nice sidewalk, that eventually, and I say eventually, probably within the next five years, will connect from Battles Road where out of the city limits, we now have an apartment complex, you know, right on the edge of the city limits across the street from non-city limits, we've got an apartment complex, and people from that apartment will be able to use the sidewalks, hopefully get all the way to, to the City of Fairhope.
Wait a minute, are you saying County Road 3 or are you talking about Section Street?
They're both the same. I don't know what it's called there, but the one that we approved, let me see here.
South of Twin Beach?
Which one was it? The SD 2033, the 29-lot subdivision, that's out of the city limits, and we required a sidewalk on that.
Well, that's right, but you've got a lot of them that you're not requiring sidewalks. You're requiring them to leave an easement. It does the same thing. I mean, you're.
It doesn't do the same thing because easement, you don't have a sidewalk.
Wait a minute, you're, wait a minute, wait a minute. You're requiring them to leave an easement for a sidewalk. Does that trigger a major subdivision? Or are we going, or what you're saying is we're going to require them to go ahead and build it regardless?
No, I'm saying, I'm saying, we have been allowing easements instead of sidewalks when the sidewalks go to nowhere. In other words, if this were out at, you know, Red Barn Road, maybe we wouldn't require it, or on County Road 33 or way out, County Road 48, we may not require the sidewalks because you'd have a 100-foot sidewalk going from nowhere to nowhere. However, in this, in this case, you've got sidewalks on the west.
Does the easement trigger the same thing?
No, this case, you've got sidewalks on the west, you've got sidewalks on, excuse me, you've got sidewalks on the north, you've got sidewalk on the east, and you've got sidewalk on half of the south. So you've got sidewalks surrounding this.
No, no, Art, Art, the answer to your question is no, because we're not requiring them to install anything. We're only requiring an easement for the installation of sidewalks at some future date when the right circumstances arise for sidewalks to be punched out that far. But the answer to your, but your answer to your question of requiring an easement for some unspecified future installation of sidewalks is not the same thing as requiring sidewalks, and therefore would not convert it to a, to a major.
Okay, well, that's all, that's the only, that's, that's the answer to the question.
Yeah.
Get that in, get that in a minute, Emily.
And just for the record, Buford's, Buford's suggestion, I mean, if the commission's inclination works, you are, normally when we extend it, we, you don't extend it at the very time you grant the approval, but the regulation doesn't limit you to that effect. So, again, you would want to do it judiciously, but in this case, we seized upon a condition that probably can't be achieved within the 60-day period. So it, if that's going to be a condition of approval, additional time to achieve it probably is warranted and can be granted in the, in the commission's discretion.
I mean, my biggest thing, Ken, is on this, I mean, I, I'm, you know, fairly ambivalent, but are we going to, you know, as Art says, what we do for one, we have to do for the other. What if somebody on the south side of Morphy, I mean, on the south side of Morphy comes up on one of these parcels where we actually want a sidewalk to go all the way along the south side? It'd be nice to have one on either side. But in that case, if we just allow a waiver here, are we going to have to just allow a waiver there? I mean, I, I was thinking that we were allowing waivers when people were way out in the hinterlands, but when you were contiguous to sidewalks, and in this case, half the property already has a sidewalk, you know, why are we not going to require them to connect the sidewalks to, from property line to property line when you've got them all there anyway?
I, I did not mean and didn't mean to be understood as advancing the position that the waiver should be allowed or that I had any position on that. What I'm saying is.
I wasn't asking you that, Ken. I was asking you based on the Pandora's Box.
If the commission applies the regulations to this application and requires that relatively short segment of sidewalk, it can at the same time grant an additional period for the recording of the plat. So I was given advice that would foster the requirement that the sidewalk be installed.
But it makes it, it makes it a, not a minor subdivision then. Didn't you just tell me that?
You're using a condition of approval for this particular situation.
But it's not, if you require them to put a sidewalk in within however many days in the requirement is to put a sidewalk in, then how can we hear it as a minor subdivision? You can't.
Do you agree with that, Ken?
That's a fair point. I mean, we're just kind of in.
It sounded like something we need to, we need to deal with.
Well, in that case, maybe it needs to come back as a major. Is that what you think, Art?
I, I mean, if, if, if we're, if we're going to have the opinion that sidewalks are a, a public improvement, which I agree that they are, they're used by the public, then, then there's no such thing if we require, if we're going to require a sidewalk, there's no such thing as a minor subdivision.
I mean.
Unless we change the definition of a minor subdivision.
We could exempt sidewalks going forward. And again, I'm not too hurt on this one, but I think that, I just hate that every single minor subdivision is going to have a, you know, every single one, we're just going to.
We can tweak the definition of minor to say that something to the effect that, that the fact that's, and there shouldn't be much of it in any minor because it's a relatively few number of lots, the installation to install public improvements in the form of sidewalks, sidewalks won't convert it to a major. If that's the only installation that is required, only improvement, public improvement required, that and that alone won't convert what would otherwise be a minor into a major.
I, I agree with that. So why don't we go ahead and approve this one as is without the sidewalks, with just the sidewalk easement? And, and why don't we change the minor subdivision to have fire hydrants and, and sidewalks not trigger a major subdivision?
That, that would be, that would be the ticket.
And, Mr. Chairman, an easement is not necessary because these are city streets?
No, that, it is necessary because that's a prescriptive right-of-way. So there is, the right-of-way doesn't go far enough there to have a sidewalk. That's a prescriptive easement. There is no public right-of-way on Morphy Avenue. So we wouldn't need an easement there.
Yes.
Extending from the existing sidewalk to the boundary, to their boundary? Is that what you're saying, Lee?
No, I'm saying on this one, we just do it without, just requiring, I'd say we just require an easement on this one.
No, but I'm talking about the location of it. Normally, we would put the easement on their property proper.
Right.
Here, we're talking about, because this, this little nuance, because it's, part of this right-of-way may be prescriptive, so what, you know, if it's, if it's in the public domain, we don't need the easement if, but since it may be, we're going to get the easement as a prophylactic measure, but it would, the location, rather than jog over and be on their land some 15 or 20 foot away, we mean that the easement, the sidewalk.
Continue from the current sidewalk.
Which way is it? Westward?
Extend west from the current sidewalk.
Yes, okay. Just wanted to be clear.
Commissioners, understand that in, in, in many cases, we have the sidewalk easement because we're dealing with a street or a road that is not in, that is not maintained by the city. And so we can't expect the county or state to install sidewalks. So we place that easement on private property so it's reserved along the margin of the right-of-way for a future entity to have the ability to place a sidewalk that wouldn't be encumbered by the county and/or state. In this particular development, as Ken is mentioning, it's a city right-of-way.
Well, what Lee, what I thought Lee was saying is, maybe as a practical matter it is, but he has some knowledge that at least.
Hey, hey, Ken? Ken Hunter, just show me on the map that the right-of-way would allow on that side of the road.
You're good?
So we're good. On the, on the south side of the road, the right-of-way due to the ditch doesn't go far enough, so most of it is built on easements. So apparently, so it looks like we're good on the north side.
North side, okay.
All right. Well, Commissioners, I'll accept a motion. I'm sorry I talked so long, but I do think we, we've come with one good change that we need to make in the future.
Make a motion to approve SD 20.37 upon the conditions of the staff recommendation.
I've got a, a motion from Kevin Boone to approve subject to staff recommendation. Do I have a second?
Well, that, that staff rec, it just got changed on the screen, and it's not in the minute, but that, adding the sidewalk easement needs to be put in there.
No, sir.
We can leave that off, John, because there, they just said there's plenty of right-of-way, public right-of-way there, John.
Oh, okay.
Easement, easement's already there.
Okay, so I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion, Art's the second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. All right, final item on the agenda, ZC 20.04. Seems like a pretty straightforward deal there. Who is presenting that?
That's me. This is Hunter.
All right, Hunter, you got 30 seconds.
All right. Commissioners, I hope you are tired of debating for the night.
I'm number one hypocrite. I've talked forever, and now I give Hunter 30 seconds. Hypocrites are us.
I am okay with that.
I want more sidewalks on that, the next one.
We had to have sidewalks on wharfs, right?
That's right. Commission, this is, this is relatively simple right now. It does open up a little bit of a bigger, it starts to address some bigger issues, but right now, we, last year, I think we made an amendment to waterfront lots that, that put the front on the water side, the rear on the street side. What that did is, as you know, on most properties, you can't build anything in the front yard or anything forward of the rear facade of the house. So anyone wanting a pool, a boathouse, a greenhouse, anything on the water side, it wasn't allowed and had to go to Board of Adjustment. We did take one of those to Board of Adjustment. It was a little, little bit unique, but we took that, and while at the, the Board, I asked them, you know, what's their opinion? Do they want to see every one of these, or is this need to be something we need to address in the zoning code? So they unanimously said, we don't really need to see every one, you know, if it's unique, certainly, a unique hardship, but, but it makes sense to, to allow this. We have started a conversation that we can get into, and I think Ryan Baker might be here for public comment or maybe just to listen. But I'll kind of read this, and Buford, will you, you have that on the screen for me? Can you zoom in to just the meat and potato section there, the three sentences? That from, at five waterfront lots is included in the accessory structure and dimension standards. That's a subsection, so we're basically adding A and B. And everyone can read that. What we're saying in A is accessory structures may be in front of the principal's building on waterfront lots, but may not be located within the required front or side yards. Now, in essence, what that's doing on, so a lot of our bay, bay lots are different. We have some 70-foot deep, and we have some that are 700-foot deep. There's still a required front yard, so 35, whatever the zoning type is there, 35, 40 feet from the front, which is the water's edge, you can't, can't build in that. But if you have a 700-foot lot, then when your principal building area begins, you can put it, locate that in front of the building. That, that's in essence what that is, is saying. The second part, B, we're exempting them from that requirement. Boathouses are necessarily going to be in the front yard. So, and that gets a little bit tricky, that historically, we've basically said anything over water is ADM, not US. We're not going to look at that. We've had some unique ones. The one that went to Board of Adjustment was a boathouse that was actually out of the floodplain, quite a bit into the lot. It was kind of an intermediate step from coming down.
It was kind of an intermediate step from coming down the hill to the pier, so it was a rest point, and that became the boathouse without a boat being in it. So this is saying where the, what's exempt from that front yard, but still, the pools, the gazebos, those type of structures can't be within 40 feet, but if they have another 400, they can do that. You see some gazebos halfway down the hill in a network of stairs, there's all kind of creative solutions there. We did say this had to be in the principal setback, so you see that why the, we don't recommend allowing the five foot to a property line, staying within the principal setbacks because there's another requirement that says accessory structures can only be 25% of the rear yard. It doesn't address where those are located in the rear yards, any accessory structure. So you can have a three-acre lot that's 700-foot deep, but the, it's only 50-foot wide, the rear yard, they only get 25% of that, you know, 200-foot building. So we're, we could come back and address some of those concerns in the future as we get into definitions of accessory buildings, dwellings, structures, but right now, that's where we, the intent here is to remove the Board of Requirement for variances.
Take 90% of the variances away from them.
That's right.
With this, and then worry about the rest later.
That's right.
All right, and this has been advertised?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and on this, we're just gonna make a recommendation to the city council, correct?
It is a public hearing.
So Kevin will see this again then. All right, in that case, I'll go ahead and open-
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I was gonna open the public hearing, but go ahead, Art.
Hunter, I've got a question for you. You said, and now it's blanked out on my screen, but you said boathouses have to adhere to the side setbacks. Is that right?
That's, that's what we wrote down here.
If you get a, are you talking, now, it's different, there's a lot of difference between in, on the river, Fish River, for example, in Magnolia or wherever, and Mobile Bay. So the Corps of Engineers has got a definition of an extension out into the water. All your boathouses on the bay are anywhere from 100 to 400 feet out in the water. Where, are you talking about the, the side setback as an extension of the, the property lines, or-
Yes, in other words, on the bay. Yeah, in other words, on the bay, aren't the north and the south property lines, say you have a lot that's perfectly compassed facing, you know, north, southeast, and west, then your north and your south property lines that go out west would be a, you know, a, the line that you go out and you'd have to be with whatever the appropriate setback is off of that. So in other words, you can't build, go ahead, Hunter, I'm sorry.
So, and what I will, what, we do not, if it's over water, if the pier is over water and then there's a boathouse with a lift 400 feet out, we don't review that. That's, that's out of our jurisdiction and we rely on ADM to do that. What we're talking about specifically in this short, in this solution, is when someone is building a storage building, a, you know, so there's some neat structures out there where kind of a rest point, storage, getting out of the floodplain, really on to the property proper.
Boardwalks, that would be on your property as well.
Yep.
You know, where a lot of people, you know, Art, connect like the houses on piers to their wharf up, you know, up high with the boat underneath it.
Mm-hmm, so, and-
Well, my point, my point, my point of asking that question, Hunter, and I'm, I'm tired and I'm ready to end this too, but, but my point is, take Battle's Wharf as an example, the whole stretch from Grand Hotel down to, all the way to Fairhope, to the pier, runs northeast. That beach runs northeast. The lot lines are east and west, therefore, you've got an angled beachfront on those lots. The Corps has made a determination now that the lot lines are not out in the water, are not extensions of your property line, they have to turn 90, this is the screwed-up mess I've ever seen, but they've got, those lot lines going into the water have got to turn 90-degree perpendicular to the beachfront, which is just a train wreck. But I just don't want us getting in the middle of that either. But if you're saying that it's out in the water, it's not-
That's not what we're looking at.
Correct.
There's some jurisdictional issues there on, you know, we see some property lines that are 100 feet out in the water, land hadn't been there forever. Sometimes it's nature that's taking that away, sometimes it's, you know, building a seawall and dredging and, and I'm not sure where we, where we should measure from. I'm not sure that's a clear-
I don't know if we want to get into riparian rights right now, so.
No, no, no.
Let me go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. I'm opening the public hearing for ZC 20.04. This is, anybody watching, you see the definition, it's just basically trying to knock 90% of cases where somebody wants to build some type of a connection to a wharf, a gazebo, some type of a boardwalk access structure that's gonna be on their land between their house and the bay, river, creek, what have you, whatever's considered waterfront, where it triggers that that's their front yard. Would anybody wish to speak to this item?
This is Ryan Baker.
Yes, sir.
Hey, I sent an email to you, and I don't know if it could distribute to the other commissioners or not, but I really, my only question or concern is the difference of the five-foot and 10-foot of an accessory building. Right now, you can do an accessory structure, it's not, doesn't have to stay in the rear yard, it can be in the side yard of a building, of a lot, does not have to stay in just the rear yard. So you could have a pool that is in the side yard next to your house, just cannot go in front of your house on this waterfront lot. The way it's defined on this would prevent you to have a pool or a gazebo or anything five feet off the property line on a, on the, on the water side, but as soon as you get equal to your house or behind your house, you can slide it over to the five feet, and I just, I've talked to Hunter about it, we've had a big conversation about it, but that's the part that doesn't make sense to me about this particular on A, and then on, on B, I think the word boathouse is just the, first of the confusing part, if it was pier, gazebo, covered, you know, pier or covered area, or something to that effect, that described it in a different way might be a better terminology, and I'll leave that to Hunter decide, redefine the terminology there, but anyways, those are my two comments.
All right, thank you, thank you, Ryan. Does anybody else wish to speak to this item? Okay, if not, then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. Yes, sir.
Hunter?
Yes, sir.
I'm, I'm a little confused by the wording that accessory structure can be in front of the principal structure on waterfront lots, but be, may not be located within the required front yard.
That's correct.
Is there, I just don't remember when we made the waterfront changes to the, for bay lots and the, when we changed the zoning ordinance? But is a front yard on a waterfront lot something different and smaller than what would be a front yard on a regular lot? Because a front yard goes from the front lot line to the building line.
The required front yard by our definition is the front of the lot and to the setback line. That's the required front yard. Now, in front of the building is just a location anywhere between the front of the building and the front lot line. Where I'm going with that, on a 70-foot-deep lot, there's not room to put anything, and you only have 20 feet of the front, and I think you see some of that on Mobile Street. We don't necessarily want crammed in that 20 feet accessory structures that don't have room for those things, and this is, again, separate from pier and a boathouse over water. But on a 700-foot, we, we have, where you have, might have 200 feet, that can be located within the front, in front of a building, but yet not in the required front yard. Does that-
Now, what I was asking is, what is the, what's the front yard on a waterfront lot?
The, if you look at the definite, you have to, for Ken and the public, you have to look at the definition of waterfront lots, which is Mobile, and then you have to look at the lot front.
I'm with you on that.
The, I think it's defined as yard front, and that is designed, defined as the lot line at the water, on the water side. So lot line, and then you, then you take into setbacks into account, which is gonna be different depending on what the zoning is for each of those, those waterfront lots. So then you have to look at the setbacks, and the distance between the front lot line and the setback line is going to be the required front yard.
Okay.
I know on Fish River, you'll have houses built out over the river in places.
Yeah, and there really are, and some of the complete front, required front yards are underwater, so by the historic boundary lines. I do have a-
Let me, let me follow up on that. That's what I thought the answer was, too. So if we're saying you can put accessory structures in front of the principal structure, but not in the front yard, I mean, those two things look exactly opposite of each other.
No, they don't. I'm not, I'm not-
The front yard, isn't the front yard from the, from the building line-
Nope.
-to the waterfront?
No.
They just said it was from the-
Setback line.
From the front, from the front of the, of the lot, to the setback line was the definition of the front yard.
No, it's not.
Everything else is just in front of the building.
Now, the definition of the front yard is a yard extending the full width of the lot and situated between the front lot line and the building line.
Projected to the sides.
Projected to the sides. That, that's not the actual location of the building, that is the, and if we need to clarify that in the definitions, the setback is, is what that is.
The building line is the actual line at which a building on a lot is constructed. It is not the setback line. It is the actual line at which the building is constructed.
But then we need to add the word setback.
So as I read, as I read A, we tell them you can put accessory structure in front of your home, but it can't be in your front yard, which is in front of their home.
No, it says the required front yard in definition underneath yard, subsection E, yard, comma, minimum exterior or required, is that space remaining between the minimum required setback line and the property line for a particular front, rear, interior side or street side yard. That's where we, that's where we derive the same definition for the 25% of the required rear yard.
Okay, 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 gotcha. Thank you.
Yep, sorry, I didn't have that in. Yeah, it's there. Thank you, Mike.
All right, Mike, you can go have lunch now, go have dinner, thank you. You're off.
I do have one request, and I think this is okay, Ken, you check with me. If the commission would like to direct me between now and council to better define what boathouse is under this, I'll be happy to do so. I think that was, that's when Art and Ryan both had some confusion, and by the time I get to council, I can clarify that with the definition.
I think, I think we need to, I think the commission has to, let me look at the zoning ordinance real quick.
You could change boathouse auxiliary structure.
That's where we get, we've got to get a better addition, definition of accessory structures versus buildings versus dwelling units, because we, we struggle with that, and I think that's kind of where Ryan's coming from. A pool is not the same thing as a, as a, you know, 4,800-square-foot garage with an apartment above it. So there's, and this one-
It's still a five-foot setback, I don't, you know, want to put my pool touching a property line, and I don't want my neighbor's pool touching my property line. Personally, I think five feet's enough, you know, I don't, of course, I guess you could get in your pool and hand your neighbor a beer in their pool if the two touch each other, just might, maybe it's, it's nice.
Yeah.
To answer your question, Hunter, I think the commission can approve with conditions, but those conditions need to be specified. I don't think we could make a recommendation to the city council and then to change the zoning ordinance, and then have it take up something different than what came up from the planning commission.
Makes sense.
Either on a denial or an approval.
Can you make a change on the fly, real quick, Hunter?
Is there a, is there a reason this can't be set over a month so we can look at it a little more carefully?
Yeah, let's do that.
I think we want to make sure that we put in verbiage of what the use is for. If you can kind of detail it in recreational use, then we know more what a pool is, or a, you know, a slide from their yard into the water, you know, we could get a little more detailed, but I definitely think this is something we need to take some time to get right.
Hey, Holly, Emily just told me that we do not have to readvertise if we get a motion to hold it over till next month. Would you like to make such a motion, and then Hunter can change the verbiage to where he feels comfortable, and we can look at it next month?
Sure, I make a, and I don't, I cannot see this, I can't scan down to see what item number this is.
It's ZC 20.04.
Can I make a motion to table ZC, what is it?
20.04.
20.04.
20.04. Is that good enough?
Yes, I got a motion to table ZC 20.04. Do I have a second?
Second.
I've got a second. We'll give Kevin that second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All in favor, say aye. Still don't even need a second for that. Thank you.